All right, welcome everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. We will begin with an indication and the pledge, and so if you wish to stand, you're welcome to. And I would ask Mr. Andrews to make the application and Mr. Calvin to leave some pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity once again to enjoy the fruits of service. We thank you for this opportunity to be called servants and to play a role in helping this community become a better place to live. We pray that all of the requests that come before us today are heard, examined, and give us pleas, the wisdom and knowledge to understand those and to share those to the best of our abilities in the interest of our city. It is in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the opening remarks, I just want to welcome our newest board member, Chris Elberston. This is his first meeting. He is appointed by the commission, by the parish commission, and he took Pastor Theron Jackson's seat. So, welcome, Chris. And thank you for your service. All right. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make a public comment on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it's very important that you fill out a slip and you drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. And we will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, and then we'll hear from those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. And when your three minutes are up, you can see your time on this little timer on the screen. When your time is up, I'm going to alert you to that, so don't be offended. It's just a matter of procedure, so I'm going to alert you when your time's up. You might want to keep your eye on your time. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak and rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on the agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment during that time. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, and I think we only have one today, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it's your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter that you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. So as a courtesy, please remember to turn off all of your cell phones while the MPC board is in session. Our commission values your testimony and we appreciate your compliance with these guidelines. And we also appreciate y'all being here today and participating in this public process, which isn't always super fun, but it's important. And we appreciate having citizens like y'all here today. So next, I will see if we have an approval of our minutes from August.
Motion to approve second.
A motion to approve by Mr. Andrews and second by Mr. Joseph. Mr. Joseph, okay, all right. Call for the vote. All right, our minutes from August are approved. Moving on to our first, the first item on our agenda is a consent agenda item, which we haven't actually had in a while. It's case number 19301 SP, final plat. Since it's the only one, do I need to ask, can we move straight to the motion? Has there anybody, did anybody request to speak on this agenda, on the consent agenda item? No, okay, all right.
You can just vote on it and have a motion to approve.
All right. Motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ramides. All right, our single consent agenda item was approved. And now, moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. First, case number 19300 DP, a dedication. The applicant is Moore &amp; Associates.
Good afternoon. Andy Craig with Moore &amp; Associates, 1324 North Earn, Suite 301, Shreveport 71107. This dedication is for a commercial subdivision development that the owners do, and you can see it connects from Highway 1 to Old Moore's Ford Road up close to Blanchard. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Board, any questions about this dedication? No, thank you, Mr. Craig. Is anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Mr. Ramides and second by Ms. Demartow. Call for the vote. And that application is approved. Next case, number 19381C. It's a special use permit and site plan. Applicant again is Moore &amp; Associates. Welcome back.
Andy Craig, Moore &amp; Associates, 1324 North Earn, Suite 301, Shreveport 71107. This is simply a site plan, a special use permit for the C3 zoning for the used car dealership there on 70th Street. I'll be glad to answer any questions on it if you have any.
Questions?
Thanks.
No, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition? All right, seeing none, board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Ramides and second by Mr. Calvin. No discussion, call for the vote. And that application is also approved. Next case, number 19386C, which is a zoning request. Applicant, Shreveport Caddo MPC, for some LSU Health Sciences Building Foundation. Who's going to present this one?
Madam Chair, this case was originally dealt with through the UDC rezoning, and we tried to identify as many properties we could that were actually being used as institutional campuses. There was several pieces of property that were misidentified at that time and were not identified as a part of the ownership or the campus. And we would just like to make sure that at this time that we go ahead and rezone that to institutional campus from the current zoning that's in place now.
All right, so it's R2 to IC Institutional Campus, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? All right, seeing none, board, any discussion, questions? Motion to approve by Ms. Demartow, second by Mr. Andrews. And that application is approved. All right, next case, number 19387C, a rezoning request. The applicant is Rowanote Development, requesting an RE to an R2. Is there anyone here representing the owner or applicant? Hi, welcome.
Thank you. David Strange with Rowanote Development. Our address is 725 Avignon, Suite C in Ridgeland, Mississippi. First of all, I apologize for the low-tech presentation. There was a miscommunication between me and the planning department on whether or not we could do a PowerPoint. So, I showed up with paper copies, but I think that we have an overhead that will put things on that we'll broadcast. Our company is a diversified real estate holding company. We develop-
Would you mind just pulling your microphone up? You can move it around.
Up a little bit, right there, okay.
Thanks.
We develop commercial, retail, and housing developments in Tennessee, Mississippi, and Louisiana. We typically do about three large developments in any given year. Currently on our books for this year, we're doing a single-family subdivision in Tupelo. We bought an apartment complex that we're repositioning in the market in Vicksburg and intend to sell after we go in and refurbish that. And we're looking to do a condominium development that we're here to talk about today in Shreveport. The site location- Oh, you've got the whole thing. So the site location is right here. That is at the intersection of Pines Road and Jefferson Page in the wooded area back behind Brookshire. That's roughly a hundred-acre wooded site that we understand previously had a mixed zoning, but was thrown into a comprehensive zoning of RE by Action about a year ago. But that previously, the site was zoned for multifamily, single-family, and some commercial purposes. So we identified about a five-acre site with a 300-foot frontage road to allow for future commercial development that's kind of consistent with our long-term development plans. Go ahead. Flip. That's the Brookshire there at the intersection, and you can flip one more. And this is probably most illustrative of what we're doing. It's a little bit difficult to see, but in the upper right-hand corner, this is in Ridgeland, Mississippi, was a Brookshire, and that grocery store pre-existed all of that development that you see around it. Immediately to the west of that is Avignon Business Park, which is an office building complex that we developed, which is where our corporate headquarters actually is in. And then down on the bottom left-hand side of the screen was one of our first kind of gated condominium developments like this. We completed that development in 2008. It's called Village Charmont. It's a gated community. It's a condominium association. It's very similar to what we're proposing here. Back in 2008, very much of what you see there was not in existence. To the north of that is a single-family subdivision, and there are several retail centers through there, a walk-in medical clinic, banks, things of that nature. The commercial has really taken off. And as you can see, most of the residential neighborhoods were developed such that they're set back away from the main passage roads there, so that there's a commercial component on the front of them and residential in the back. And so, that's what we would be looking to expound upon and do something similar to what we did in the Ridgeland area, is over time, develop things in addition to the housing that we're proposing today. Go ahead. And again, we had a PowerPoint, but in preparation of this low-tech presentation, that's a recent photo from like a week or two to the entrance at Village Charmont. So you can see that now, 10 years later, you know, it's a very well-maintained by the homeowners association and the condo association there. This is a higher elevation view that you can see. That's the same 300-foot entrance that we would be proposing. That's a restaurant on the right and a strip center there on the left before you get off the main access point to that development. Go ahead. One of the things that, you know, our company is kind of doing a lot of our long-term planning in is this statement that was from Realture.com. And it just says, "As baby boomers look to downsize out of traditional neighborhoods into low-maintenance plan unit communities, it turns out millennials want the exact same thing." And we're finding that's very true in all the cities and across state lines that we build in, that people want less private land to maintain, a little bit smaller yards, and a little bit larger community green spaces and things like that, and a little bit less on the maintenance front. And that holds true for most people who are in the homebuyer's market at this time. These houses that we build, in this case, they're in the structure of a condominium. They're all energy efficient. They're LEED certified at the end, which is a designation we get from building to all green standards. We have, like I said, lots of green spaces with, you know, much smaller private yards for people to maintain. You know, we designed this stuff with porches and things like that to really promote a sense of community, to kind of get to know your neighbor, because, you know, we have discovered that in houses in yards that have, you know, 100, 120-foot front roads, it's just a lot of grass that no one ends up using or cutting in the front yard. And it's a lot of maintenance, and people don't really get to know their neighbors. Campbell Place here was the very first condominium development we did. That was in 2004 in Clarksdale, Mississippi. I put that up there just to show the kind of changes and iterations of what we've gone through architecturally over the years and trends in the building industry. So that was 2004. This next one is Lakeview. This was 2010. That's similar to what we would be proposing to build here. That's a six-plex condominium building. Everyone's got their own garage, things of that nature. You can see we pulled things up a little bit closer to the street, and there's lots of kind of green spaces in there. The next is some concepts we're working on with our architects. You know, these are a little bit more in vogue in major metropolitan areas. I don't know that we would step out there at this point in Shreveport with that particular design, but we have those in place that are the same square foot. It's the same everything with a little bit of a different front on it. It's kind of an updated look. The next one, these are, you know, like I said, 1,500-square-foot houses with garages. I've kind of covered everything on this slide. It's just kind of the way we try to put together these neighborhoods and communities. The next slide is that it was currently zoned RE, and we're asking for just a zone to R2, which would allow for the condominiums, whereas I understand that previously it had been zoned all the way, allowing up to R3 for some type of multifamily development. Next is our working survey, and after that is the working site plan that we have. This is a work in progress. Obviously, we haven't at this juncture met with the local fire chief and stuff and to figure out the appropriate turn radiuses and all the kind of things that we'll need to do with the public works department on the infrastructure and crossings and all that kind of stuff. But this is just our working model that shows a couple of things, that, one, it's a gated community. Two, there's lots of green spaces. It's not very dense. You know, we're saving a lot of land for people to utilize. There's a community center there that's got a gym. You know, one of the things that you can get today are additional grants to help offset some of the money it costs to develop one of these by promoting wellness through a company called Neighborhood Works. And, you know, they'll give a grant for providing or promoting housing that has walking trails and things like that to promote healthy living, to help offset some of the infrastructure cost. And lastly, is our, just a copy of a declaration of condominium restrictions, which is what we put on all developments that we do like this. Because obviously, there has to be a strong condominium association in place at the time of any transitions into individual ownership, because there's obviously common insurance, maintenance, and costs associated with actually in a condominium. As you know, the buildings are insured, and you're just insuring the kind of walls in as the homeowner. At this stage, we are working on our financial packages to put together to, you know, see what kind of financing we can get in place to make this as affordable as possible. Just rough math is, at a 1,500-square-foot house, kind of regardless of the state we build in to build a LEED-certified home, it's at a minimum $100 a foot. So to build a house itself is about $150,000. To acquire the land, put the water sewer and all the infrastructure in, you've got about 25 in the lot. So we end up-
We have about a minute, just-
Okay. We end up with about $175,000 in kind of base costs in these things. So what we try to do is go in, apply to anyone that we can apply to. We've applied to Louisiana Housing Corporation, the Capital Magnet Fund, Homeworks, all these other entities to get some grants and cost offset in place, enroll this in a first-time homebuyers program so that we can get the affordability concept as much as we can so that we can sell these for a little bit of a less price point than that, use those rooftops to support our next developments, which would be more commercial and retail-oriented. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Strange?
I appreciate the presentation. Even without a PowerPoint, it's a good presentation. But my question is, it's 1,500-square-foot home. What's the space of the lot? Is it like 10,000 square feet? What's the lot size?
It's a great question. I don't have that number in front of me. I worked with the planning department and whatever that minimum- Whatever in R2, there has to be so many feet of lot area per unit.
Right.
And we're below that standard.
So, these will be, you said first-time homeowners. These will be purchased, not rented out?
We will, and we've asked for financing to get these in a program where we can transition them into homeownership properties yet.
So in your other slide you showed in different states, they are all sold? You don't rent any of these properties?
No, like for instance, I was saying, one of the projects that we currently have right now-
Is an apartment.
We're renting by default because it's an apartment complex. We're renovating it, moving people, and then we're going to get the occupancy back up, sell it, and try to make a dollar in the process.
But condos you want to sell. You don't want to rent them.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ramides?
Yes. Do you guys maintain the management of the condo after the fact? Once you've sold all the spaces, the-
No, that's a good question. It's a transitional phase, because obviously, all the insurance has to be in place. The common area is maintained when not everything is sold. And so, there is a management company in place that facilitates that as it's transitioned over to the homeowners association. Typically, that happens at about 80% of the sales. Then the homeowners association has enough revenue coming in that they're not burdened by that.
Okay, yeah. And the, so you were talking about the, you alluded to the grants. But those are packages that you get to help offset the cost of the closing costs and things like this. So this would have to be someone with a stable income and a job and-
Absolutely. So, let me qualify that. Those come in two flavors. One is a grant that is given to the developer. Like Neighborhood Works is just a simple example, that for putting in walking trails and stuff, we apply. They'll say, "We like it. Here's $50,000." Well, it's about $1,000 a house for what we're building, all right? So that's a grant to me. It reduces my cost. Louisiana Housing Corporation does first-time homebuyer's assistance, down payment assistance, soft-second mortgages for people that don't have money for a down payment. That's for the individual. So, we position these to be in a position to take advantage of both of those avenues. It promotes affordability across the spectrum.
Okay, all right. And the, typically, from your start of construction to fill up, what's the timeline you are normally seeing? I know every month.
18 to 24 months, from beginning to end, typically.
And my question would be, if we were to pull up any of your other properties on Google Earth, you know, would you be proud of what we would see as far as, you know, today?
Oh, yeah.
As far as the way they're maintained? And you would feel like it would be a good neighbor if you were next door?
Without question, and I kind of smiled a little when that Village Charmont, because I hadn't been over there in a little while to take the picture for this. Like I said, that was in 2008, and that picture was from last week. And you can still see the homeowners are maintaining the landscaping around the gate and everything. So it's beautiful.
We need to have silence, please, so we can hear our speaker. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Calvin?
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Okay.
Typically, when a development comes like this, they meet with the homeowners, have a couple of meetings before this hearing. Have you met with the homeowners or anything?
No, I was not aware of any.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I have a question about security. Do y'all, what kind of security system do y'all typically have? And do you have cameras, things like that, to keep the properties?
It's gated. I mean, and so that's kind of the security feature. It's one of the key call kiosk that you punch in the code that someone can give you, or it's a call box, and then that's provided to the local police and fire so that they can get in in case of an emergency or something like that. But, you know, we're gating out.
Okay, and then the grants from the Neighborhood Works. Are y'all planning to do that on this particular property to have things-
Absolutely.
To have uses that promote wellness?
Yes, absolutely.
Like, you mentioned walking trails. Are there going to be, do you plan on having that on your site plan?
Yes, on that site plan, I don't know if you can really see it very clearly. There's a walking trail on there, and there's several green spaces. And you can put, you know, they call it outdoor fitness equipment and stuff like that. And just, you know, having that around the neighborhood. And of course, the typical benches and things like that that promote people sitting around and chatting and all that kind of stuff. And there's a gym. We're putting a gym in the community center, and so, you know, that's kind of one of the big benchmarks to getting their money.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Strange.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? First speaker will have 10 minutes, and each additional will have three.
Thank you very much. My name is Nathaniel Manning. I reside at 6303 Gilwood, S-G-I-L-W-O-O-D, Circle, Shreveport 71119.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to rise in opposition to this venture. The reason being, one of the foremost things, and I think the question that was asked, have you met with any of the homeowners or people in the community? No, we haven't had no prior knowledge of any of this. The second reason why we say that is because I heard a lot about homes, condominiums, apartments. We don't know which one it is. We still have, it's so vague. We don't know what's going to be going on with that. And we all know that you can go in under disguise of coming in with condominiums only for, when you cannot fill them, then they become low-income housing, and you do whatever you can to get them filled. We live in an area that does not fit the carrot of that. Some older communities that's right around in that vicinity have fallen to urban blight and have had a series of problems there. And for the negative externalities that will come with multifamily dwellings, we just don't think that would be feasible and tenable for the community in which we live. The other thing that we are concerned with is that, after doing some research, I found that, looking at all of the census data, the area that is in question today that we're discussing does not fall in a hard-to-develop needs area. Therefore, based upon HUD requirements, there are no subsidies to the developer to develop such housing units. So that is something that's not out. And then another thing is, it does not fall within a high-poverty census tract. Those are criteria that HUD would require in order to provide any types of subsidies to those types of housing units for any mixed-income or low-housing units for that matter. Another thing that I'm very concerned with, you mentioned the fact that, you know, you're looking at the market segments of millennials, baby boomers, and so on. We know that those with life cycles, those individuals typically will move in, and they might be there for a year, or they might be there for two years. And then, once they decide to start having families, they move out, and they want to have more single-family type of dwellings. So, I'm concerned that once that happens, then the property again becomes vacant, and then there's every effort to try to fill it with low-income individuals. I don't think there's been enough done in terms of the economic research to look at the kind of clientele that would be able to move into that community and provide the kind of life standards and sustainability that we're looking for in our community. Yes, there's a lot of land there, but we want to make sure that things that are added to the community are actually going to add value to the life cycle of the community. Just recently, we had had some issues with some crime in the area, which is very close in proximity to that. Right now, we have an area that, like I say, close in proximity. Further down Pines Road, we have another area, same kind of things going on. They were apartments, ultimately, they turned into low-income. A lot of the houses there have gone to HUD housing, and with that brings a lot of negative externalities, and we're trying to sustain and maintain the community. Not only to mention the fact that this is one of the few very viable- Not only to mention the fact that this is one of the few very viable middle-income for black residents in the city of Shreveport. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to maintain that, and as you can see out here in the audience, I have a whole lot of people here who came here to voice the opposition to that. My phone rang off the hook last night, and I was getting them all through today during my class, telling me that they were coming here because they are opposed to this. Many of us have had our homes there, we've educated our kids there, some people are retiring now, and they don't want to give the community over to things that will not fit very well with the community. So with that being said, with all of the uncertainties and so forth, I'm happy to stand here and voice my opposition to such development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manning. Anyone else here, do you have any questions for Mr. Manning? Any questions for Mr. Manning?
Good afternoon to our director and to members of the MPC board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I am Lewis Johnson, and I am Cattle Parish Commissioner, and I represent this district as well, and I too have come today to stand in opposition to this project. There are a number of reasons that I stand in opposition to it. Dr. Manning spoke about our neighborhood and the neighborhood as a whole. The gentleman that came before said that he was unaware of the neighborhood and had not made any attempt to speak to that group. Well, we're here today to make him aware. That is our presence and our purpose for being here on today. His presentation, he said, was low-tech. I don't think there's anything higher-tech than the people that are represented and the people who are affected by this project. And so I stand against it for a number of reasons. As he said before, the information that he gave was very, very vague, is very nonspecific, and we are very, very concerned about our community. We're concerned about the community that we live in, we're concerned about our property values, we are concerned about any outside entity coming in without at least the respect of communicating with the body before doing so. As I sit on the commission, this project has not come before our body at any point. But if it does, or when it does, both as a citizen and as a neighbor, I plan to oppose it. I'd like to thank those citizens that have come out today to let you know that we are concerned. So as relates to traffic and the challenges that it will bring, as it relates to a decline in the community and a decline in property values, these are our very, very serious concerns, and I want this developer to know that not only are we here today, we're gonna be here. We're not going anywhere, we're gonna challenge it every time. So we have 100 today, next meeting we'll have 200. We will keep coming, and we'll make it very, very clear that we do oppose it, we do not want low-income housing in our community. And for him to give us any certainty other than that, I was hoping that he would today. He did not. He spoke about grants that have not been awarded, he spoke about things that have not happened before, we're talking about people who are not coming to this community, people who are here. People who have been here for 20 and 30-plus years, and I think that we have an opportunity and we have a right to speak as to those things that come into our community. That is why we are here today, and when it comes before you, we ask that you would consider every citizen in our community, and we're asking you now and in the future to oppose this project. Thank you very much.
Can you wait just a minute? Let me see if there's any questions for you. Commissioner, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Ramies?
Thank you for that, and yeah, the speaker before you did probably one of the best jobs I've heard of articulating a reason for his desire to have it denied, but as the commissioner and as a leader in that community, is there anything that the developer could put, or could, any assurances he could make that would alleviate some of you guys' concerns? Because a lot of times, we like to see the best for both, you know, the developer put new, a new development in our community that the community receives, it feels it's positive, you know? So for your children to go and buy their first home or something like that, is there anything that you can think of, or that you've talked to some of your constituents, that you guys may, could come to some sort of terms that you would be acceptable?
I really appreciate that question, Mr. Ramies. Let me answer it two ways. First of all, let me say that as an elected official, I represent the desires and the concerns of our community. He has not communicated to this community on any level, so I'm not prepared today to even speak as a whole until we as a community come together and get that information, and I can then represent it at that point. But then I'd like to ask you the same question, as it relates to your community and your neighborhood and where you live. What could an assigned entity do to come into your neighborhood with potential and obvious low-income housing and make that acceptable? So I'd like for you to kind of think about that as well. So I will not attempt to speak on behalf as a whole, but I stand prepared to do that. This community will come together, as you can see now, and we will communicate, and we will come together with a answer to that, but as of now, it's not very palatable at all, and it's not palatable for the reasons that I gave you.
Yes, okay, I appreciate that.
Please, we need to have order, thank you.
And my follow-up question was, that was not intended to put you on the spot. A lot of times-
I'm prepared to answer it, sir, that's what I do.
And you've never been shabby.
Okay.
The, a lot of times, what we try to do is, sometimes there's something, there's a hang-up somewhere that the communities don't want to hear noise, or they don't want, you know, a lot of different developments, so we sometimes try to weed through that to see if there's something that's consistent that you guys are hearing. So that was the only point to that, was not to look at you making the decision on the spot, but if there was something that we could do to somehow come to a resolution, so.
All righty, you know, it's been said that a people that forget their past is destined to repeat it. On Pines Road, we've got some trailer houses that should have never been there. They should have never been there, but they were there because we did not come forward, or whoever was in position at that time did not challenge it. So the first time, that's shame on us, that won't happen again. So we are vigilant, we are watching, we're communicating, and we're prepared to challenge it for that reason. We've got to come against it in an organized effort in order to do that, and that is what we are prepared to do.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions?
Anyone else have a question?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make just one statement, that the application that's before the MPC is strictly just the rezoning of the property from residential estate to R2, which is multifamily. That's all that you will be deciding upon, and that's all that you will be voting upon today. You don't, you do not have the luxury of knowing what type of multifamily will be allowed if you are so inclined to allow the property to change from residential estate to multifamily.
Thank you.
I think when he came forward, he spoke to what his plans were for the property in that respect, and even the zoning itself, which seems pretty benign at face value, but if you open that door and allow that, this is an indication of what that would allow. Whilst the citizens as a whole might would have even considered that, but I think the last thing to do at this point is to object and oppose each area of it for that reason.
So are you saying basically you're not opposed necessarily to the new zoning, you're just opposed to the low-income proposal?
No ma'am, that's not what I said.
Okay, well, so go ahead and elaborate for me, what portion of the particular plan that the speaker had, Mr. Strange, that wasn't about the zoning?
Okay, at this point, for this to be our first time looking at this, I think it would be underwise for me to give you every detail concerning it, because I have no details other than what was presented today.
Okay, so you would just like an opportunity to get more information before there was a decision made, perhaps?
Oh, well, absolutely, we want more information, but as of now, our decision is that we do not want it. We do not want it, but of course, we want more information, we're open for dialogue, and we're open for further discussion, which is what the West Shreveport Alliance and other bodies are there for.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you ma'am, I appreciate you.
Anyone else here, any other questions for Mr. Clark? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth R. Epperson Senior. I reside at 3822 Treat Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119, in the Timberline neighborhood. I have been a 17-year resident of Timberline, I built in 2002 within that area. I've been consistent in my opposition to issues such as this. I've sent an email, and I asked that the staff were disseminated to each and every one of the members that are present here, and in my statement, I said I consider this an affront to the citizens of that area. Number one is because the gentleman, after all of the years that we have gone through zoning changes within that area, and I've been through many, some of you may be on this board, have seen me many times as a citizen, as well as a 21-year elected cattle parish commissioner to come down and address you, both pro and con against these type of zoning changes. It would be so easy if the gentleman would contact Timberline Home Association, Tall Timbers, other progressive neighborhoods surrounding that area, and have a dialogue with us. There are some things on Sunday, when we go to Piccadilly's and Olive Garden and places where we have sit-down restaurants, we would possibly be amenable to those type developments. So I think it's in the front that we will come to have this change, this zoning change, and I'm in opposition even just to the change to the zoning application at this point in time, and I hope this body would vote this down today. Thank you all.
Alright, thank you. Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Epperson? Alright, does anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Yes, ma'am, hello everyone.
Welcome.
Hey, lil, hey everyone. Hi, I am Mary Ruffens, and I used to be a member of this board. You guys miss me, don't you? My address-
Yeah.
No. My address is 3800 Camrose Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. I have a little different, as my kids say, little different switch, a little different to say about this. I have been, actually been a real estate agent for over 30 years. So it took me about 10 minutes to get on my computer, and this is what I found out, that we have right now 122 homes for sale in the 71119 and 71129 district. The houses range from $792,000 to $10,000. We have 15 apartments complexes in our area, and about 15 condos, townhouses. So we have plenty, and every one of them, when I roll by them, have on their welcome vacancy. So my question to the developer is this, did you do any data, data? Did you do any statistics? Did you do anything in our area, or in our, even in Shreveport, to find out whether or not we need this particular apartment complex or condominiums, as you call them? But I have been in this business so long, I can tell you what's gonna happen. What's gonna happen is, you're not gonna fill those condos up, and you're gonna start taking Section 8. That is what's gonna happen in that area. And a question I have, another question I have for you, if you want some land, honey, see me after the meeting, I will find you somewhere. If you need some land somewhere to develop, there are plenty, there are plenty of areas.
Can you please address the board? Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Alright.
But he was looking directly at me, so I wanted to look directly, okay, that's fine.
We have about a minute.
But, okay, well, the main thing I want to know, give me some reason why you think this is a good area for these condominiums. Have you done any research? Have you done any data? Have you done anything to convince us this would be a good place for it? If not, you know, we could try Norfolk Road, LRB Road, or we can go Broadmoor, Baja City, or somewhere else like this. Thank you so much, you guys, I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Hang on, any questions for Mr. Ruffens? Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. Are you, you're speaking in opposition, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. My name is Christie Stewart, I live out on the Pines Road, and I'm unsure if this is really the right meeting, but I do oppose that. I don't expect the woods that we have over there to stay woods, I know that pretty soon someone is gonna want to develop the area. Yes, it would be nice for them to meet with us, so that we can meet with the city of Shreveport. We have had an increase, increase in crime in the Pines Road area. In the last year, I have spent over $3,000 on security around my home. My home was on the news because I had a masked man downside of my house. They wind up catching, it was a special meeting with Prater, everyone came in November just last year. Those boys, they captured out of the Latier area and another area in Shreveport, but before we add another community, we have got to be of service to the current community that we do have. Our homes are valued right at 200 where I am, but the police spends a lot of time in the apartment communities. So at night, my security cameras are catching people walking and pulling on our doors. So before we develop anything else, we need to have another community meeting and meet about the crime in the Pines Road area. Thank you.
Thank you, Stewart. Any questions for Ms. Stewart? No questions? Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Alright, seeing none, I would invite Mr. Strange, you are invited to come back for a rebuttal if you wish.
So the good news is, I agree with everything that they said. They're kind of the biggest advocates for what we're proposing. The first gentleman, one of the things he said is because that area is not a qualified census tract, which is a designate, which is true, it is not. That is a designation that is required to have HUD assistance and things like that. So by virtue of the fact of, regardless of what I say, because the land is where the land is, it's not eligible for HUD assistance. It is not a qualified census tract. So I don't know how HUD and words like that, Section 8, work its way into this conversation, but to be clear, this has nothing to do with any of that, and that's not a qualified census tract out there. We did do a fair amount of due diligence on looking at the area, and if I can expound upon another comment, that was made, their houses from $10,000 all the way to $700,000. You know, that's one of the reasons we're drawn to that area, is we think that that's an undervalued market where we can start building houses at the $175,000 mark, the next neighborhood, to 200 or so, the next neighborhood will be at 300, and as I showed you, you know, the story of kind of Charmine, my office is across the street, I mean, that's where I live and work every day, and those neighborhoods have developed over time and those commercial things. As more commercial things come, more tax-based, to increase police protection, and when you have businesses and things like that, just in the traffic and things like that, it will, just by virtue of the development, become a safe and controlled environment as more and more people are present to take care of the neighborhoods. As far as the vagary of our plans, because of asking to get to R2, we can't build any more than 40 units based upon the densities of a five-acre piece of land in R2. So it can't be an apartment complex, I mean, there's no going back and changing our minds, that's kind of the maxed-out density on five acres of R2. So we can't build more than 40 houses if we wanted to. You know, I think that another way to look at it is it's not just this one $10 million investment, but if you look over time, and like in other areas that we've been in, with the out parcels and the new homes and the other business system, this is part of a $100 million potential development on a piece of land that's that large, or kind of, you know, rare to come by in this day and time, in areas like that. And again, look, to simplify things, Brookshures is a big corporation. They didn't put that grocery store on that corner without doing a lot of due diligence to make sure that they had the rooftops and the customers that they need to sustain that thing. We've been successful following companies like Brookshures in the past, and we're gonna continue to do that.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Strange, any questions? Any follow-up questions?
Just one question.
Yeah, Mr. Clark?
The one thing that I heard, Mr. Strange, the one thing that I heard from the neighborhood is that they feared the unknown, and we and you got very little information out to the citizens of that area to make them aware of exactly what was being proposed. I guess, guess my question is, we were almost at an impasse in between you and them, if the board was so inclined, and they have no, they have no responsibility to do this, but if the board was inclined to defer this application for a month, defer and continue, do you think you would want to go and present to these citizens exactly what you're proposing? you would want to go and present to these citizens exactly what you're proposing?
You know, sir, I'm amenable to doing what it takes to advance our proposal. I don't think I could offer anybody anything else than what I'm offering today. I mean, we're transparent with what we're doing. We've showed pictures of what our buildings look like. Another comment that was made is that there's condominiums out there, and apartments out there, and houses out there. That kind of speaks to our point of it's consistent with the existing zoning that's out there. It was zoned that way, it was zoned multifamily. When I heard most of the people speak, they said, "Well, we bought our houses." Well, you bought it when it was zoned multifamily. And so we're not trying to sneak any multifamily in. I mean, only 40 houses will fit on that. That's a picture of what we build. That's what's going to be there. We have to go through the planning process of subdivision plaits, meeting with all the staff members and personnel. We have to get architectural plans approved and building permits. I mean, there's 100 checks and balances along the way. I mean, we're not trying to hide anything from anybody.
And I don't think that, and if I imply it, then I owe you an apology. I'm not implying that you're trying to hide anything. I'm just sharing with you that the citizens of that area are concerned about what's coming to that neighborhood, and that's a right they have, and that's a protection that they should stand behind by all means necessary. All I was sharing with you is possibly a better presentation, better information about projects that you all are doing around the country, may establish a means of more, them being more comfortable than now. But if you are not required to do that, and I understand, I was just sharing with you that you've got a whole population sitting in these chambers that are uncomfortable. And when you're finished, you will leave, they will live there. And it behooves us to assist these citizens in making sure that they are real comfortable with what's being approved and what's coming into that neighborhood. And that's all I was sharing with you.
And again, I appreciate that, and the only comment I have to that is, I presented the facts today. I think people came in with preconceived notion, and when confronted with what it is that we're going to do, it's just conjecture on, well, you may do this, you may do that, but that's not what we're doing. I don't know how HUD worked its tentacles into this, or Section 8, or...
Ms. Cooper?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And I think Mr. Clark's been with the planning commission for a long time in this community, and, which is one of the reasons we think he's the right person to be named Executive Director, because he understands how... And what he's alluding to is, we've seen many cases since I've been here over the past almost six years, that we have this type of outcry from the community, because sometimes it's bad information, but sometimes they're right, sometimes they're fearful of what they don't know, that we've deferred, and then at the next meeting, the some of the same people may get up and say, "Okay, he's alleviated these concerns by this, we have no problem with this now." But I can understand when you say that I've laid out all the information, but their concerns come back from, because maybe it's a broken system on the government's end, but they haven't had access to that information. I understand that you're new to Shreveport, and you submitted everything as you were required, but just what he's saying in the past, communication goes a long way. And so, and like he said, you have no obligation to say that I'll sit down and present it and see what, if there's anything I can do, or talk everyone through this all the way through, and answer some of the questions where people are not defensive, or feel like they're on edge in that, you know, relaxing environment. So that's all he's trying to convey, is that that's a lot of times will resolve everything. And many times, the citizens get what they want, and the developer gets what he wants, which is what I was hinting at earlier. And so, you have no obligation to do that, but that's, to make it any more clear, that's what Mr. Clark was saying, and he's been here a lot longer than I have. That's...
Sure, I'm agreeable to that. I'll be as transparent as I can be. I can answer any question, but I'll quit digging. I'm happy to do that, but I just, I guess that, you know, for someone saying, "Well, if things, hard times come up, and someone wants to rent their house," or whatever, I mean, there's, in the condo association, a prohibition against short-term rentals and things like that, but at the end of the day, there's no stopping that. There's no assurance that you can ultimately give someone that your next-door neighbor can't rent their house.
Sure, but those are some of the things that you walk through slowly with the people that are the most affected by that, by someone that lives behind there.
Sure.
Like they were talking about some of the mobile homes and things that they were allowed, but now this community is more organized to say, "We're going to be sure that it doesn't, anything that we don't want to happen, happen." And just again, many times, if you sit down and answer any question they want, and, you know, walk the way through it, everyone leaves and goes, "Okay, well, we can understand that now."
I'm happy to...
And I'm not suggesting you weren't forthcoming, but...
I'm happy to do that, if someone is in a position to...
Oh, there's plenty of leaders out there, I promise you, that would facilitate that. And we're not saying that you would come away with the resolution, with the decision that you wanted, but it would be maybe a good idea. That's all I have, thanks.
Just an opportunity for you to present to the people behind you instead of to us, and to not have a 10-minute time limit, and to have a more open dialogue, because, you know, in the end, we like to see collaboration when we have developments. It's just a lot more positive for the community as much as possible. That doesn't mean it always happens, but it's a goal. It's something to strive for. So that's all that we're saying, is that that might be an opportunity that you could Any other questions for Mr. Strange?
And just the, because, and I'm sure the staff has told you, but if you're denied, you can't apply for a year, but you can appeal it to the body, which is the council or the commission, I'm not sure if it's in the city or outside the city, but you'll get the same people, and like Commissioner Johnson said, maybe more if that comes. But yes, you'd have to make another trip to Shreveport, but at least it's not another trip to appeal a denial, and maybe get what you want out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Mr. Strange, we are pending a meeting to come and meet with the West Shreveport Alliance. So whenever that meeting is set up, it would be an ideal time for you to come, along with all the other things that the MPC has, to present to the citizens of West Shreveport.
That's a meeting that...
We don't know when the meeting is going to occur, but we are hopeful that that meeting will occur within the 30 days, so that you would be able to listen to the concerns of the citizens, and also other things from the MPC that they will be able to discuss with the MPC.
But, Ms. Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Medes.
You could probably get with some of the leaders in the community and say, "Hey, do you guys have a church we can meet at?" And that can usually be set up, especially with the concern that's here.
Okay.
So you may not have to wait on a meeting like that, that you could go ahead and make that happen in the next few weeks.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Strange. All right, so before the board deliberates, we go into deliberation, I just wanted to see if we could get a head count of the citizens that are here today in opposition to this application. We just want to get a head count, if you could just please stand. Mr. Jean, or... Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, Board, what is your question? Yes, sir, Mr. Andrews?
I have a question, too.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please, before you First of all, I want to say good afternoon. I've chosen not to say a whole lot this afternoon because of two reasons. One, I'm sitting in a voting position on this issue, and two, the majority of my colleagues here have voiced their concerns, and you have so eloquently expressed your concerns about our neighborhood. My street, LaFleur Drive, and half of you live on that street, dead ends into this property. So I've chosen just to be quiet and let you do your part and express your concerns. I'm familiar with the fact that the West Shreveport Alliance leadership is here. I am sure they'll take advantage of the opportunity to get with this gentleman, regardless as to how this vote goes this afternoon, but I appreciate your courtesy and your kindness to the Board and your attendance today, and being very honorable as our chairman conducts the meeting, and we expect that if, in fact, you have this opportunity to come back again, please consider coming and doing your best to do what you did today. Let us know how you feel, be as respectful as you can, and be the neighbors that I love to live with. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews?
Does anyone else want to come? Is there some discussion?
Do we need to have a motion before discussion? Or are we just still... Do we have a, is there going to be a motion to discuss?
I have a motion to defer and continue.
All right, a motion by Mr. Medes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Elberston, all right? Do you want to discuss? Open for discussion.
Did Leo, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a clarification from the staff, please. When I see that MPC staff recommends, the Board recommend approval for this request as it's less invasive than the zoning that existed prior to the implementation of the UDC, can you expound upon that a little bit for me?
Basically, if you recall, and we may do a tag team on this, but basically, if you recall, the zoning that was before the UDC had part of this property as R3, which was more density, and part of it was B3, which we could pull up and show to you. By zoning all of this property RE, it made it much less intrusive, because it made it just residential estates, where you could have interesting things, single-family dwellings, and even you could have horses, if you are so inclined. But that's the zoning that was previously in place, and we just made it all RE residential estate. And that would allow for these type of applications to be heard before you. But it would not, it would not open up the property to other intrusive uses until they come before you and file the application.
So is it, I guess it is appropriate to defer this, even though we're deciding on zoning, not a site plan?
And I shared that with you, that I think that sometimes these applications get totally out of context, and this one has gotten totally out of context, but as an opportunity to do some of the things that you directed me to do, to make neighborhood participation more involved, to get input from neighborhoods, to do neighborhood planning and get involved with developments in neighborhoods, this would be an excellent opportunity to, for us to reintroduce ourselves to the neighborhood, and for this gentleman that's making an application to possibly give the neighborhood an opportunity to believe that this is just the first of multiple developments to come, and it will do some of the things that, over the years, I've heard that West Shreveport is really interested in doing, with additional development and more retail, more upscale retail, more national retail chains, and so That's the only reason I recommend it to defer, for everybody to have an opportunity to sit down and discuss this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other comments or questions for discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor to defer and continue by Mr. Medes, and a second by Mr. Elberston. I will call for the vote. All right, and this application has been deferred until next month's meeting. I hope that the neighborhood, the alliance can get together with Mr. Strange and his representatives, and we can all learn a lot more about the proposed plan, and about just the implications of an R2, and what that means independently. All right. Next case, number 19391C. It's a rezoning request. The applicant is Jill Rayburn. And I'll give you just a minute, if you don't mind, we can clear the room, because we can all hear you.
Might as well say, "Go Tigers."
I know, "Go Tigers."
"Go Tigers."
All right, go ahead, I think we can, I think we're good.
My name is Forrest Rayburn, 2309 North Cross Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. I'm here to answer any questions. This is a lot that had gotten, it was a residential lot, R1, that had gotten rezoned into rezoning. We have it for sale, we've got a buyer, and he would like to, at some point, maybe build a home on it. But his requirement is that we get it back zoned to R1. I realize there's other, there's plenty of protection for Cross Lake with the Cross Lake Overshade, Overlay District, so I know that, but it shows on the map, it's hard to tell, but our tract is only 50 feet wide and runs back 300 feet on there. We've had it for sale, we've owned the lot now for 20-something years. It was an estate piece of property that we just have gotten cleared up and we're trying to sell. So we've been trying to sell it for a month or so now, and we've got a buyer, and this is his request, and it'd be what, we didn't realize it had gotten rezoned, so I'm just asking that you rezone it back to R1.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rayburn. Any questions for Mr. Rayburn? All right, anyone else heard of speaking in favor, thank you, of this application? Anyone to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Dot Randin, can you hear me?
Yes.
I live at 1634 De League, Shreveport, 71109. I live in the townhomes adjacent to the property that is being rezoned, and I'd like to point out that it's being rezoned to a residential area. First, I have a great deal of information here for you on all the species it will affect. Unfortunately, I don't have time to read that to you, so I apologize for that. I do want to talk to you about sewage. I live in the townhomes every time it rains. Every time we have a heavy rain, the sewage overflows and flows directly into Cross Lake. And I don't see how you could consider rezoning something residential and add to that burden, because the sewage system cannot handle the people that live there. It's just that simple. Had I known this was available, I could have brought videos for you, I could have brought pictures. The city has come out, the city knows about this, there are red flags everywhere and a sign that says, "Posted no trespassing," but it doesn't tell us, "Don't get on the land, don't get on the pier, don't get on..." It doesn't say anything. All I can tell you is, every time we get a heavy rain, raw sewage flows into Cross Lake, from right in front of my townhouse. I also want to point out on that map up there, where it says R2, and the green part is NA, and I understand it's just a little strip of that, but the area south of R2 is not blue. That is not open lake water, which it appears to be. It is a combination of hardwood trees, cypress, and button bush. So it's, I doubt if the water is two feet deep there. All right, and I am going to point out that for most residents on Cross Lake, the little finger you see of land that goes down the middle, it divides Cotton Cove into actually two coves. For them, that is the most important piece, because that little piece of land actually extends way past C2 and C1, all the way to R17, the residence there, because I have permission to sit on their piers and take pictures of the birds out there and watch them display and watch them catch fish, so I know. The land doesn't show unless the water is very, very low, but there's a channel marker out there to keep the boaters from getting stuck, which they do on a regular basis, and we have to go out there, and I have to go get some of the grown men to go out, you know, and help pull them out. But in that area, the American white pelicans that... But in that area, the American white pelicans that roost here in the winter roost right there. And heavy traffic, drainage of that area to allow more boats to come through, whatever, is going to affect those. Now, me, I like the ducks, but other people I know love those pelicans. And I have the numbers that I'm not going to read to you on the various species that winter here, and they hide back there, the ducks do. Of course, they have to get over the part where the hunters hunt them, and then they're safe once they get over to our little area. But I just want to quote, just straight from Wikipedia, from the Migratory Bird Treaty Act of 1918. Some of the conventions stipulate protections not only for the birds themselves, but also for habitats and environs necessary for the bird's survival. And that would be predominantly those button bush plants that are back there. Again, I think I'm the only one present who could speak to the sewage, so I took my time on that because it is not pretty and it does not even smell nice where we live anymore. So we can't sustain what we have, it is my opinion, we don't need any more homes, not even one more added there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't think they want the numbers, but I will gladly give them to you because I love ducks. According to the Audubon Society, if you do not know it, half of the bird species and up to 40% of the waterfowl of North America spend part of their lives in the Mississippi flyway. Now, Cross Lake, of course, is in that Mississippi flyway. In most years, the coastal marshes of Louisiana regularly hold half of the wintering duck population, excuse me. Historically, that would be millions of pintails, gadwalls, wigeon, and green-winged teal. Now, these birds pass through and rest on Cross Lake. But the green-winged teal, the ruddy ducks, the hooded briganders, and the northern shovellers winter here. Because remember, all of the area below R2 is bushes and trees, they can hide back there. Nothing can get them, once they make to that little pocket, they are safe. To the south of our townhouses is a section of woods. All the pachirines that visit our feeders nest there. Some migratory songbirds, including the prothonitory warbler, red-winged blackbird, and eastern kingbird nest there. All the resident birds, migratory birds, and our beloved pelicans feed there. It is not uncommon for gadwalls, wood ducks, green-winged teal, blue-winged teal, and hooded briganders, ruddy ducks, and wigeons just to plain hide out there. Bald eagles hunt there, a red-tailed hawk is nested there. Red-shouldered and Cooper's hawk hunt there, great-horned owl hunts back there. A 10-foot alligator has been seen back there. Another large one, I would say eight feet, was caught in the hunt a few years ago. We have mink, we have river otter that live back there. Black-bellied whistling ducks and neotropic cormorants are new to this area, they now breed in this area. They hang out in this area and they fish in that cove. And at the tip of that little white spear of land, it's shallow enough for them to roost out there. And there's enough little branches and stuff swept in from storms from them to sit on. The area that has button bush, which attracts, attracts butterflies, birds, and hummingbirds. 24 species of birds, including the robin, kingbird, and towee, are attracted to that button bush. The nutlets that persist through the winter are a food source for the birds. Waterfowl and shorebirds consume the seeds of common button brush, whitetail deer eat it. Wood ducks use the plant structure for protection of brooding nests. Butterflies, bees, and hummingbirds are attracted to the common button brush for their nectar. Bees use it to produce honey, and we do have a beehive on one of our trees. So the important thing to me, again, is to protect the animals that are already there, to at least do an environmental impact study to see how they will be affected because anything driving up and down that little area, first of all, I don't know how they're going to get out if it's only two feet deep, they may have to dredge, and that would definitely affect them. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramden, any questions for Mr. Ramden?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any questions?
That's alright, yeah, that's okay, I think we're good, thank you.
Where, where are you residing?
Right next to, where it says R2, that is a group of townhome, townhomes. I live there, at 1634.
Okay, thank you.
Civicly. And if y'all can do anything about the sewage problem, we would really appreciate it, we've called the city, written the city.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Hi, my name is Raymond Plyler, I live at 2405 Parham Drive, Streetport, Louisiana, 7109. And I am a real estate agent. That particular example on the city of Streetport that I grew up, the NA, if this particular parcel is allowed to be zoned R17, then the rest of the wooded area there that's between R2 and R3 have the possibility of being zoned to that R17. In the listing that the real estate agent had in the multi-list, it said, "Check this almost one acre piece of land with lake frontage. This land might tie in well with one of the other owner properties, or you could get part of the action that stretches from Lakeshore Drive to Cross Lake." So tying in well with the other properties, I'm not sure exactly what the agent meant by that. I don't know what the other properties are at this point because we did not have enough time to research it. So that large NA portion there, I'm not sure what size lot that is, but if all of that was zoned to be residential, is this going to end up being an apartment complex there or something at some point? So I would ask that this be deferred and get some more information as far as the other owners and everything that own that property and see if there is some, something in the future that somebody's looking at at rezoning all that land to build another development there, an apartment complex.
Alright, did you say your name is Tyler, Mr. Tyler?
It's Plyler, P is in Paul, L-I-L-E-R.
Thank you, I thought I misheard that, okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Plyler? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Alright, Mr. Rayburn, you have an opportunity, but if you care to, thank you.
Just if you have any questions, like I said, it's, it's a residential one-family lot. That's all we have there, that's all we own. We're just trying to get it where we can sell it for a residential lot. I don't believe that any action taken on that lot will drastically affect what's out in the lake. And of course, the lake is protected with the watershed. I live on Cross Lake, so I know and I appreciate the protection that Cross Lake is given. So, you know, we're just trying to, you know, help someone else and help put a house on a vacant lot so that the taxes will be increased for the city and this, that, and the other. Thank you, any questions?
Any questions? Alright, thank you. Oh, who, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Clark?
I'd like to tell you I'm losing my voice, but...
It's okay, I'm not paying attention.
I'd just like to make, remind the board that this is another one of those pieces of property that when we redid the maps, we changed the property from, I think it was R1D to NA to try to be more realistic with how the property and the land actually lays out. But all this applicant is asking you to do is just return his land to what it was before we redid the maps.
Which we have precedent of doing so far.
We've done it consistently with one board member's objection.
Correct. Board, what is your? I'm sorry, we... We, I'm sorry, we just, we've already had our rebuttal, but we do have letters, let's see. I just have a question. Were letters included in our packet right here?
Yes.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Alright, so Board? We can deliberate, but we need a motion.
Yeah, motion to approve, to return his land back to what he had previously.
Motion to restore the original zoning by Mr. Remedies, and we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Andrews, alright, discussion? Any discussion?
I mean, to the point brought up by Mr. Clark, we're simply returning it to where it was prior to being sort of downzoned as a consequence of the UDC, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
However, maybe it was, maybe it was with the UDC and all that was actually zoned for, it's a better zoning. I understand that he owns the property and has, you know...
We don't say it was a bad zoning, we think that the rezoning was advantageous and made it much more appropriate. We just sort of said the presidents that if a property owner wants to return his land for usefulness back to the original zoning that he had, you consistently return that zoning back to that...
And we extended that window of opportunity till when?
Two years.
Next year, I think it is.
I think, yes, August of next year.
August of next year.
And after August of next year, it will be no motion. It's just giving citizens an opportunity that were not made aware that they'd lost the rights that they had on their property, the ability to return back to the original zoning that their property had.
I just wanted them to understand that.
I hope I spoke clear on that.
No, we set a precedent.
And we also took a vote on it.
I just wanted them to understand.
Correct, oh, yes, absolutely.
The opposition to understand that.
Yes, and I do hope the city will come out and look at the sewage issue. Alright, well, I guess we'll call for the vote, if there's no further discussion. A motion to approve the rezoning, the restoration of zoning.
Madam Chair, that date is August 2nd, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and that application is approved.
Thank you, I'm very happy.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to case number 19311P, a small planned unit development, a spud. The applicant is Taylor Made Enterprises. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Staff. I'm Dusty Taylor from 2622 Highway 33 in Ruston, Louisiana, 71270. I'm a general contractor and I represent a family that owns a state-of-the-art mini-storage, climate-controlled mini-storage facility at 2147 Southern Loop. They have been in business for less than a year, and they've had a number of their customers approach them about building a boat storage facility on the backside of this property because they say they need it in that area. Now, as I understand, presently, this piece of property is on C2 special use. And investing with the staff of the MPC, they suggested that we should change this zoning to C2 small planned unit development in order to comply to be able to build boat storage. Now, I received this letter from them yesterday afternoon, and I can only assume that y'all have probably seen one also. And as I read through this, I was amazed, is not the word, but my compliments to y'all, it is very explicit, it is very thorough, and I cannot imagine anything I could stand up here and verbalize that could make it any clearer. So however, should anybody have a question, I'd be more than happy to try to answer that question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Alright, thank you very much.
I've known Mr. Taylor a long time, I never envisioned him being nervous, but I believe we got him today.
Well, you know, we're worn out now, so... Alright, anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Alright, Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approved by Mr. Andrews. With the stipulations in the letter that's so well drafted.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Colvin?
Can I ask a little question?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, would you come back to the mic? Do you understand the stipulations?
Sir.
You do understand the stipulations on the document?
Yes, sir, I sure did.
And you're willing to go along and do all of those things?
Yes, sir, understand every one of them.
Thank you very much.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, motion to approves on the table, call for the vote.
Madam Chairman, if I may, Mr. Taylor sold a little boy's pig for $9,000 several years ago, and the little boy belonged to Vivian Andrews. He's an excellent auctioneer. He didn't hear that, but he's still a little nervous.
Alright, that application is approved. Okay. Next case, number 19301. This is a closure and abandonment, the application is SWEPCO. I believe we have a board member who will be recusing himself from these discussions and vote for this and the next case.
Madam Chair, board members. Jimmy Whittington, Caddo Parish Public Works, 505 Travis, week 820. The parish received a request from SWEPCO. SWEPCO owns the adjoining property, adjoining this portion of the dedication from Bullen Street. This is not built, the dedication exists, but it's not built. It's, they're asking to close and abandon it, abandon it as part of a bigger project that they have at this site. The parish of Caddo has absolutely no objection to the closure and abandonment. And I'll answer any questions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Whittington, any questions? Seeing none, anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone present to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Remedies. Second by Ms. DeMarteau. Any discussion, call for the vote. That application is approved. Next case, number 19312P, a rezoning request. Oh, wait, did I just get one? Oh, no. The applicant is Coil Engineering Company, but the owner is, again, Southwest Electric Power, so Mr. Colvin will be recused.
Charlie Coil with Coil Engineering, 3925 Benton Road in Bossier City. SWEPCO bought the old Westwood Country Club a number of years ago, and that's where they are constructing their new Streetport Operations Center. They have since, that property was rezoned in 2014 to I1. They have since bought several tracts, smaller tracts surrounding this, and these are three tracts that they would like to get zoned I1, just like the rest of their property. And I can answer any questions.
Alright, is Mr. Coil right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Coil? We're reading the staff report, so I think most of them are answered. Alright, thank you very much.
I just had a comment, I just, I wanted you to pass a word along to those people associated with SWEPCO. We're glad to see them take that golf course and make something special out of it because I know for a fact that there's some folk going to be looking for jobs around that area, and there may be an opportunity to get more people employed right there at that intersection.
Yes, sir.
We're excited to see you come in there. We're excited to see you come in there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone which to speak in opposition? Alright, seeing no one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Andrews.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joseph, any discussion, call for the vote. And that application is approved. Alright, thank you. Next is, uh, case number 19305, an annexation, and the applicant is the city, City of Shreveport. Alright, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name is William Towleton, I represent the City Engineers Office with the City of Shreveport. 505 Travis Street, Suite 300, 71101. Uh, this is a annexation request made by several property owners that are along Mount Zion Road. It solves several problems that we've had. One of the deals is, is that to the western portion of this, the city limits runs down the center of the road. And we've wanted to resolve this issue for many years, and we're taking this opportunity to do it. Also, everything to the north of this, all the way out to Emmett Drive, is already within the city limits, and we want to carry that, uh, annexation of Mount Zion Road up to that point where it well defines it for the maintenance for both the parish people and the city's people. Uh, the people on the south side that are requesting this have tied on to the city's water and sewer system, and are looking to tie on the city's water and sewer system, and we're trying to facilitate their developments.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Towleton, any questions from our board? Alright, thank you very much, anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioner's staff, whoops, okay, how's that?
Good, good.
Perfect.
I'm Martha Merrick, I'm the executive director for the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana. Our address is 2307 Texas Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71103. We are one of the property owners of the sections of, or the areas that are requesting annexation. We have plans to move our facility, currently we have two facilities in Shreveport into one location on Mount Zion Road, and we would love to be annexed in. Currently, we don't have water and sewer, and, um, where we have been approved to tie in, it would be really, um, wonderful for us to become annexed into the city, so we hope that you will approve that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Merrick?
Just wanted to say it's good to see you.
Nice to see you too, and Ms. Andrews. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed? Um, seeing none, um, board, what is your pleasure? Motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, so a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joseph, any discussion? Um, this is in keeping with the recommendations of our staff, um, alright, so I will call for the vote. Alright, that application is approved. Um, next case, number 19301, um, WFC, a special use permit and site plan, and the applicant is Falk and Foster. Good afternoon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, my name is Ralph Weingarten, and, um, I represent the applicant Hemp Hill LLC. And this is actually, um, property owned by Goodwill Industries of North Louisiana. Um, Hemp Hill is the tower builder and owner. I'm, uh, from Falk and Foster at 678 Front Avenue Northwest, Suite 215, in Grand Rapids, Michigan, I'm 49504. And I'll be the principal speaker for Hemp Hill LLC tonight. This proposed site is located in one of the busiest commercial areas in Shreveport. Consequently, it's always also one of the greatest areas of demand for all types of infrastructure. And, um, just like developers of residential or commercial real estate come before you with applications for development approval before the stock is completely depleted, um, and just like planners of roads and sewers hopefully act before things get to the point of gridlock or overflow, Hemp Hill in this case proposes to add capacity to the city's wireless infrastructure in this busy area at a point where no capacity is currently available to new providers. The only tower in this area belongs to SBA. Um, it is full as it stands and can't accommodate additional wireless providers. Additional wireless infrastructure is clearly warranted in this busy area. To address this need, Hemp Hill LLC is proposing a 180-foot tower with space for four providers. These are not necessarily just limited to telecommunications providers, it could be public safety antennas, could be other technologies. Uh, we've got things coming down the pipe like self-driving vehicles, Internet of Things, uh, many, many possible future demands. Um, it's all, all coming our way. Um, we believe a robust wireless infrastructure in this area with plenty of future capacity for providers implementing cutting-edge technology is a key component of Shreveport's Smart City Initiative and puts the infrastructure there in a busy place where it will be definitely needed in the future. Um, this area is a heavy-impact area already, um, as, as a busy commercial area. We've got high-traffic volume on the Burt Coons Industrial Loop and Yori Drive, that's a constant presence. You've got noise, exhaust fumes, light at night, um, the scale of facilities in the area is huge. Uh, there's a reason the Walmart's called the supercenter. Uh, you've got a vast expanse of sprawling parking lot in the area with overhead lighting at night and minimal greenery to break up the expanse. Um, in no way can the scale of activity in this area be called minimal. Um, given this existing heavy impact in the area, um, we believe Hemp Hill's proposed site has negligible impact. Um, it's positioned in the, in the middle of this expansive swath of commercial zoning, not near the edges where there's residential neighborhoods. Right in the middle of the commercially-zoned area. Um, it's a passive, unstaffed use, it doesn't generate any significant traffic, doesn't cause vibration, glare, noise, or odor. Um, it's not near the main public thoroughfares or the areas of heavy public usage. It's away from the public-facing Goodwill entrance or Walmart entrances, and kind of tucked back next to the Goodwill building wall, uh, back where their rear loading dock is. It's across from, um, the side of the wall of Walmart where they have a bunch of, um, air conditioning units operating. Um, we don't feel it's in a place where there's a lot of public visibility or traffic. And, and about the most that could be said, I guess, in terms of site impact, is that it would be visible in the distance, unless it's blocked by other buildings or billboards or freestanding signs or utility poles and lines. And there's a lot of overhead utility poles and lines along the main thoroughfares, and when those are in the foreground, they definitely dominate in comparison to a tower in the background. Um, this site does comply with your special use permit general standards. Um, it meets setbacks, the design fall radius is within property boundaries, um, the operation will not pose any public hazards. Uh, in fact, the availability of high-quality wireless service ensures good communication in the event of an accident or a health event or a crime or natural disaster, so we believe it directly enhances the public health, safety, and welfare. Hemp Hill's location, again, as I said, is centrally within this commercially-zoned areas. Uh, in contrast with the SBA tower, if you look at their location, there's a clear difference in compatibility. Um, their location is right at the intersection of Yori Drive and Burt Coons Industrial Loop. Um, it's right next to the IHOP and Copland's of New Orleans restaurants and parking lots. Um, so it really looms over some pretty heavily publicly-used areas rather than being tucked back away from those. Um, from a radio frequency engineering standpoint, the information that we provided from Verizon's RF engineer, Wilbur Vale, clearly establishes the need for the proposed Hemp Hill monopole height and location. Um, the coverage plots show a clear difference in in-building service between the current SBA tower and the proposed Hemp Hill Tower. The Hemp Hill location will provide in-building coverage to the LSU Shreveport campus and the Christus Hospital complex as well as to residential neighborhoods to the west and to the southeast, and the SBA location does not. Um, also, from a capacity standpoint, Verizon's closest sites are to the north, and so the more southerly Hemp Hill location means there's less overlap and, um, a more clearly-defined dominant service area. When sites are really close together, a lot of times there's a patchwork of signal that overlaps, and so users are switched back and forth between whatever tower thinks is closest with the stronger signal. So when you're close together, um, you have more of a patchwork quilt-type service area where, um, as you move, you're just, you're switched back and forth, and it increases the likelihood of a drop or interruption to your call. When the sites are spaced farther apart, there's a more clearly demarcated line between the service area of one site and the service area of another. So as you're moving from one to the other, you should just be switched over one time. Um, in this case, the Hemp Hill site being farther from Verizon sites to the north establishes a better, more clearly-defined cell or dominant service area, and that should lead to better service as well. Um, also, it balances the, the capacity load between the sites better than the Hemp Hill location. And, uh, Mr. Vale is here today as well, so he might be able to speak in more depth to it if we get into that. While we didn't get the final word from your consultant, uh, because there's been some back and forth in terms of the detailed requirements, we do, um, feel that Verizon's RF engineer, Wilbur Vale, is, uh, he's RF engineer in charge of the system design. He's personally familiar with the site, and I think he's the best individual to ask regarding the need, coverage needs of Verizon. So we feel that his information is, is reliable. And, and that information points to the need for 180 feet at the proposed Hemp Hill Tower location. Um, SBA has certainly taken notice of that, um, and they're now proposing to extend their tower to 180 feet in an attempt to address Verizon's need. At 9:14 a.m. this morning, we received a copy of a structural letter from SBA proposing to extend their tower by 20 or 21 feet. Evidently, this was provided to staff on August 30, but with instructions to keep it from us unless SBA gave written consent. And so evidently, that consent was given this morning, um, and that came through. Um, looking through the letter today, there are a number of concerns that we had about the letter itself. Um, this later, letter is based on assumptions, and a review of the documents is not provided. The documents that, and calculations that, that's based on, um, we don't have to allow for a review or review by your consultant. Um, it's based on the assumption that, quote, "original structure and foundation were constructed in accordance with the original design and specifications and are in good condition." We don't have any documentation about the condition of the tower, there's not been any inspection provided. Um, the cover letter in paragraph one on page two indicates the tower is 159 feet, uh, but the enclosed analysis talks about it as a 160-foot tower. I'm not sure which it is. Um, one foot of steel definitely carries some weight and has some impact on the analysis. Knowing the consultant's record of thoroughness, I'm guessing this letter from SBA would find, be found to be insufficient to provide an evaluation without those missing pieces. Um, they would need to know the documentation that it's based on and see that and see the calculations. Um, so we can't assume that an extension to 180 feet is even possible without that, without that review. Um, the letter also indicates a cost estimate for the extension is included. Um, obviously, that's something SBA would require Verizon to pay.
You've got 30 seconds.
Okay, it would be very interested in knowing what that cost estimate is, um, so that's something we would want to see. Um, nowhere in the letter does it address the SBA tower's future additional provider capacity. It just narrowly focuses on the need for Verizon's, um, antennas, but it doesn't address future infrastructure or other providers. And, and we don't feel that there is any additional capacity it's providing, whereas Hemp Hill's tower addresses that by providing at least four additional co-location spaces in the vicinity. So in conclusion, Hemp Hill provides that additional infrastructure looking towards the future, which is what planning is all about. And it does it in a good spot that's tucked away towards the back of the Goodwill store, distant from the main thoroughfares, distant from the restaurants in the area, um, in an area that's much more compatible than the current SBA tower. Given that, the, um, the other issue too is a non-conformity. The, um, UDC ordinance that you're going to be considering in a minute requires 110% of, um, of the radius to be contained. Um, SBA tower does not meet that because it's so close to the property lines, so it's a non-conforming tower under that standard, and any extension of 20 feet would not, would increase that conformity, so we don't believe you could even approve a 20-foot extension.
And I know this is a very complicated thing, so 10 minutes is, but, um, but just a moment, let me, let me get my train of thought first. Is there any questions for Mr. Weingarten?
I did.
Okay, so Ms. DeMarteau.
Um, I, I'm curious about the, I kind of know what non-conformity is, I don't want to say that, but you're stating that it, because if they want to build the additional, uh, 100 and whatever feet, you're saying that it doesn't meet conformity now, therefore, they would have to come, if.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
Please explain what you meant.
Yeah, there's minor non-conformities like landscaping, there's no landscaping there, but that's something that can be waived. But things like the fall zone radius are more of a bigger public safety concern, especially being close to the restaurants and the, and the roads. So, um, the, the, currently, your ordinance says, um, you have to observe the underlying district setbacks, but they also ask you to put a fall radius on a map so that you guys can look at it and determine if additional setbacks are necessary. The new UDC amendments that you're going to be considering in a moment don't have that fudge space of considering it. It just states straight out that all towers have to be 110% of the fall radius from property lines. And so there's no wiggle room, it's just flat out, and you have to present an engineer letter indicating what the fall radius is, and then 110% of that determines the setback for property lines. We don't have a fall radius on the SBA tower, but given the one for the Hemp Hill Tower, and, and knowing what we know, it's, it's not going to be small enough to fit within that property, because right now, they're really close to property lines to the west and to the south. And so, under that new ordinance, it would be, they would say, okay, it's grandfathered in, but to approve an additional 20 feet would, would expand that non-conformity and would be something that would not be allowed.
Okay, that makes, okay, that was your question, Mr. Colvin?
You made some comments about the site, you're from Grand Rapids, right?
I am.
Okay, have you been to this site?
I have, I've personally been to that site location.
Alright.
Yep, and we, and we, and the RF engineer has visited, and we also have some folks from Goodwill here tonight too that, that right there.
Any questions?
I'm curious about the, um, the, the letter that you did not, or the, what was it that you did not receive to?
The SBA structural analysis letter, they had asked us earlier on to provide some information about Verizon's desired antenna loading so that a structural analysis could be produced for a review by your consultant, and we did provide that information quite a while ago. Evidently, this letter was produced, um, but they said that that was proprietary and confidential and not to be released to anybody. Um, and it says right in the letter, it's for the city and consultant's review, and not to release to other people without written permission. To protect, I, I don't see anything in there that's confidential or proprietary, but that's what the instruction was. And then I got an email this morning from Manasvene at 9:14 saying, "SBA has granted permission to release this to you, here it is," so.
Did you feel that you had enough time to really assess the?
Um, I, I did give you the assessment there, I, I mean, the only thing that would need more time is if you wanted your consultant to look at it or have some independent analysis of it. From my assessment, as I indicated, there's a lot of missing pieces, a lot of, we don't see calculations, we don't have a fall radius. There's a lot of missing pieces of information, so I guess it's a take it for what it's worth, um, kind of thing. And they may say the same thing about our RF submissions or other things that the consultant didn't get a final chance to evaluate, and we say, hey, it's reliable, but they're going to say, hey, your consultant didn't get what they needed to finish their evaluation, and so, you know, I guess take it for what it's worth, but we think it's worth a lot because we've got Verizon's RF engineer, who's the very person that designs the system, saying this is what's needed, so.
This is complicated.
It is, I have a question, um, anyone else? Um, I'm, my question, I don't know if you can answer this, is about just the, the, what is the true usage capacity, or whatever the term is, for this, there's a, you reference in this report the 2014 structural analysis.
Yeah.
Okay, now, that, y'all are saying, am I correct, that that indicates that usage is already over 100%?
That's, that's correct.
And that's either a fact, or it isn't, so I don't.
And that's a fact at that time with that loading and that structural analysis, so just to be. So, just to be clear, if loading has changed, and SBA can address that too, they've got a new analysis. So, some of the users may have taken off some antennas. Verizon's loading may be slightly different. There's lots of factors that can change that. But at that time, it was at 107 point, 101.7% usage. Your consultant, Center for Municipal Solutions, I've worked with them in the past in other jurisdictions, and they usually say 100% is 100%. In the industry, they say there's some fudge factor. Rule of thumb, 105% is still okay. But usually CMS says 100% is it.
Okay, is there, what is, what is the update to that? What?
The update is that letter we were talking about that came today. And that says that SBA hired some engineers to look at it, and they looked at the earlier structural analysis and the foundation information, et cetera. And it's their opinion that there's room to accommodate what Verizon proposes on that existing tower at a taller height. So, they factored in a 20-foot extension.
At an extension.
Yeah, as an extension. So, they said, okay, Verizon, you came in here saying you needed 180, that 160 wasn't good enough. Okay, we'll raise the tower to 180, and here's our engineer's opinion that that can be done. But we don't know what the final usage number is, like, is it 101 again, or is it 96? Or, you know, that there's a structural modification involved in their letter that says they're going to put some additional strengthening on the side of the tower, and that would allow for that extension.
So, it would have to be altered?
Yeah, the tower would have to be altered. It would be raised 20 feet, but there would also be strengthening on the size of the tower.
Does the letter give a current percentage of usage capacity?
I don't believe it has an exact percentage, just an opinion that it would be supportable.
So, we don't, no?
Right. Not, not with, you know, it's the same as they complained earlier about the letter we submitted, saying we submitted a letter committing to design our tower within a fall radius, saying, you know, once we bought the actual tower and had a manufacturer selected and foundation that we could give them that full-blown analysis with the calculations. But in the meantime, here's a letter committing to design to your standards.
And did you provide this 25-page PowerPoint? Is that something you prepared?
What's attached to the, what's attached to the staff report, there's like a 62-page PDF.
Okay.
And that consists of a dump, a bunch of different submittals. And part of the problem here was with staff, our understanding was that all we needed to provide initially was just a simple map showing the system without the site and how the site fits into the system. We had talked about this SBA site and the fact that it was full. And our understanding, based on the emails, was that all we had to do was follow the example like T-Mobile did. There was 150-foot T-Mobile site written in residential neighborhood that basically was passed through without any consultant review. I think it maybe was an administrative thing. And they said, use this example. So, we gave them more than that example. But on the Friday before the last MPC meeting, we got the consultant letter back saying, we need all this other stuff. It's not compliant. We can't review this. And it's like, wait a minute, we followed exactly the example that you provided and gave you lots of information. So, then we had to respond to that within the last month between the last meeting and now. And then, there was some back and forth, saying we still need more information. And one of the items the consultant wants is the variables that went into creating the maps. And that's information that Verizon may or may not determine is proprietary. But we still need the request for exactly what information is needed. And I know CMS has some things they use, but there's never been a request through city staff for a form. I mean, we're initially told there was no form or instructions. If there is a form or, or information needed, we have not received that request.
Has the consultant looked at this letter?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little troubled by the staff's recommendation because it's, it reaches, they reach a conclusion based on lack of information, not based on.
Right.
Information, and then it, so, so I'm just wondering, all this information that, that they need to make an actual.
It's catching up to the actual.
Right, to make an informed recommendation that's better for the community, is that information you have? And you just need time to get it to them? Or is it information you actually have to go out and collect and it would take, you know?
I think it's all there. It just has to have time to be reviewed. Because basically, all that stuff we submitted, they just said, here it is attached to your staff report. We haven't had time to digest it.
Did the consultant weigh in on, is it the consultant that says that he couldn't make heads or tails of what was provided, or does he need more?
I think the consultant knows what's provided. They're just being a stickler for certain details of some kind, because.
Have you had any contact with the consultant?
I have reached out to the consultant. I initially submitted our information to the consultant and copied Manas Vini. And his response was, this needs to go through the MPC staff, not directly to me, so kind of add later.
So, you have gotten a substantive reply, just to reply that there's, it's a question of information availability at this point?
Right, and I think we've given all the information, and if, and if it's just specified what, what is missing, I don't think that that's much. I think that the basics are there for the consultant to review, and he understands what case we're making. And he's just saying, I see your maps. I see your case you're making. I just need other variables or whatever went into creating those maps. And we need to know what, what he's looking for.
And you're capable of giving that information?
I think we can give that information. We just need to see what the request is so that. In Verizon, Hemp Hill is the tower builder and owner. You know, we're concerned with not only Verizon, but the other spots on the tower. When it comes to the Verizon analysis itself, then we need to defer to Verizon as to what they can share legally, what they, what's proprietary. We think they'll be able to give you information, but I can't speak to Verizon until I get that request and can pass that to them and say, here's what we need.
So, we still don't have a hang?
But of course, we're making the case that even if Verizon stays on the SB Tower, SBA Tower, that tower is full and can't handle anything more than. So, we were proposing four new spots in the community of infrastructure.
It can't handle any more without the addition as represented by there.
But their addition is only to accommodate Verizon. That addition does not allow for more beyond Verizon. It just extends the tower 20 feet and lets Verizon stay there. If Verizon moves to Hemp Hill, they're worried about losing Verizon as a tenant, SBA is. So, if Verizon moves to Hemp Hill, it'll leave three remaining open spots for the future at Hemp Hill. And then, there'll be one open spot at the SBA site. So, either way, there's going to be four additional spots available in this area. The question is just where they are, depending who would move over.
I didn't mean to take over that. Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Weinberg? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Look at these attachments.
My name's David. My name's David Tinkus. I'm president and CEO of Goodwill Industries in North Louisiana. We're headquartered at 800 West Seventieth Street, Shreveport, 71106.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. President and CEO of what?
Goodwill Industries in North Louisiana.
Oh, Goodwill, thank you. I just couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. We're, we're the property owner. We're, of course, in support of this project. We're trying to maximize the usage of all Goodwill property. Any revenue generated in the partnership, of course, goes to our community programs, providing job training, job placement services in the community. Any technical questions, I cannot help you with in this case at all, but we are in support.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
Hi, my name's Lucas Condor. My address is 347 Clemens Avenue, New Braunfels, Texas, 78130. I'm a real estate manager for Verizon, and I wanted to come here today and let you all know that we do support the Hemp Hill Tower. We have a business partnership with them that makes sense long-term for our network. It helps and encourages us, encourages us to be able to support our network and our network deployments and upgrades. Basically, meaning the sooner that we can get technology onto the tower at a reasonable rate and a known factor, the better off Verizon is and the better off the community is to support 5G initiatives. In five years, it may be a 6G initiative. Whatever the next technology initiatives are, this tower helps us with speed to market and with our ability to deploy that network. And the basic, not to over, I don't, you know, I'm not an engineer by trade. The basic issue is that we have, we don't have known factors with SBA, and we do with Hemp Hill. And with Hemp Hill, there's a partnership there that lends itself to allowing us to deploy our network with speed, where with the other tower, we do not have that ability. And it impacts our, our ability to deploy the network and our ability to deploy the network quickly and efficiently, modify, upgrade, improve, and support capacity on the network. So, we have the best network in Shreveport per root analysis, which is a third-party independent company. We plan to keep the network, the Verizon network here, the strongest and the number one network in this area. And this initiative helps us be able to support that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Condor?
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Colvin?
Tim, explain again how this tower, it's 20-foot high, is going to be better than the tower across the parking lot? I don't get that.
So, I mean, 20 feet does make a difference.
Right.
Generally, when you go, so, years ago, when we co-located on this tower, that's what was available. As the network grows and is improved over the last 15 years, houses have been built, density, residential area. And so, I, again, I'm not an RF engineer, but I've looked at the plots and spoken with RF engineer. And the optimal height is, is to get additional 20 feet to, you know, to improve coverage in the residential area surrounding.
So, if they build their existing tower 20 feet higher, it's not going to help you any?
It probably would. So, the issue with that is, is there's a cost implied with that.
Right.
You get a four-story hotel and ask the hotel owner, could you make this a six-story building?
Right.
But they're going to say, well, yeah, but who's going to pay for it?
Well, you see what we're up against, and I'm going to go into details a little bit on, on this side, is the UDC. And correct me if I'm wrong, Eric Allen, it states that unless the need is there, it's not available to put a second tower that close. So, so as a layman and not a radio telecommunications engineer, there's plenty of places out in the country that need coverage that doesn't have it. But right here, supposedly, they're overlaid together. I mean, again, it's a complicated issue.
Yeah, so the difference, so height, height is one difference. Location is the second difference. And the Hemp Hill location is a better location. And you go to a quarter mile to a half mile in distance, and it impacts your network. And so, as you build your network around location, I do the real estate side. I basically, RF is my customer. They come to me and say, here's what our need is.
Right.
And then, it's basically my job to, let's go get as close to that need as we can and fill that need as best as possible.
Well, what about all the micro cells going around the 5G? That's not going to pick up this coverage that we need now?
So, this, so 5G is something that will be supported by this tower. This, so we think of a 5G network in area, the way I think about it is, when you go in your house, you have a Wi-Fi router. And then, sometimes, if your house is a little long, you might do one of those plug-in things. And so, the 5G, it'll all, 5G offers an advanced latency, capacity, and network service. This tower will support that via a wireless connection and via a wireline connection where we backhaul out of. But there, yeah, it'll, it's, it's all improvement kind of a deal, and this one section will support that as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I believe one of our, Mr. Bailey has a question for you, Mr. Condor?
Yes, Mr. Condor, has any stealth possibilities been looked at for the site?
So, I don't know that, I would have to defer to Hemp Hill on that. I, I will, so stealth can be done. I don't know that it would be the right solution for this. When you go stealth, you limit your antenna installation, you limit your technology merely because the 5G advancement cannot operate through a stealth panel. There are different kinds of stealth. Paint, it's, there's all kinds of stealth applications. Is there any application in particular?
Well, I know small cells, and I'm not trying to confuse small cells with macro, but within the UDC, stealth are permitted, you know, used by right, you know, provided they meet certain criteria. And then, small cells is something completely different, you know, in the right of way. So, we've had some applicants come in. They look at the obstacles on the hoops that they have to, the criteria that they have to meet. And they say, all right, well, we can do a special use permit, or we can go the stealth route. Of the other two that have come before you, they've often to go the stealth route. And I'm just wondering if that is a possibility, which it sounds like it is. Why haven't y'all explored that?
So, I think the difference is where we're at now versus where we're going. We're at, we're in a crow's nest, is what it's called. It's basically a robust antenna configuration. And that's what we're trying to support is a robust antenna, you know, it's basically four antennas per sector or three antennas per sector that are larger. A stealth application limits that, and it, it's just a, it's a different type of application. It's an infill application versus a primary.
Right, and some of the, I don't want to say opposition, at least from staff, is, you know, the fact that you have 180-foot tower, and then a quarter mile, you have another 180-foot tower, and the aesthetics and the presence that gives to the community. So, you know, with the stealth applications, which honestly, I've never heard of 180-foot stealth tower. And so, that's why I was just asking about what, if any, possible solutions that that could provide as opposed to the crow's nest. That's my only question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Condor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
Can you guys hear me? Wilbur Vale, Verizon, represent RF Engineering. 600 Hidden Ridge, Irving, Texas, 75038 is our office. So, I'm just here to just really represent Verizon from an engineering perspective and see to, really explain the reason why we need this tower. And it's really to essentially, as some of you guys were talking, were asking is about more so, not necessarily our coverage, but our capacity needs in the area. This area in, that we're serving by our site on the SBA Tower is on capacity constraint. And by essentially moving off of that tower and going to our new tower, we're able to support newer technologies, have the opportunity to incorporate 5G as, as my colleague has stated, and also give us the opportunity to, you know, to improve our capacity, give faster speeds to our customers in that area. Think about it like this. If you are in, particularly, if you look in my, in the coverage maps I provided, there are cer, three frequencies. The frequency I want to highlight is a frequency called 2100 megahertz, which allows us to incorporate faster speeds to our, to Verizon customers that live in that southeast area of my map. If we are, since we're able to penetrate into that area now, we're able to, since we would be able to penetrate into our area considering with that map, we'd be able to give faster speeds to our customers, to our Verizon customers in the area, thereby giving them the opportunity to have a better experience with their cellphone at home, you know, stream videos. Especially with the advent of streaming, there's a lot of opportunity for, for us as Verizon, you know, to service those customers and to really give back to the community and allow them to FaceTime with their families, allow them to, to use technology and to help them out. And especially with the advent of 5G, you know, 5G will allow us to even hype out with our capacities and give greater opportunity to serve our community in that way. So, I'm here if you guys have any questions regarding the technical side. Thank you.
And, all right, Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Vale? Just one quick, what, you said you're an engineer?
Yes.
What kind of an engineer?
So, I have a bachelor's degree. I'm in electrical engineering from the New Jersey Institute.
Electrical?
Yes, electrical engineering with a minor in applied mathematics. So, I did extensive research actually on, on cell radius and cell usage. So, have background in that, and I have, also have a master's degree in systems engineering, which helps with system design of the network.
Okay, so in your opinion, then, in the next 20, 30 years, what's, what are we looking at? What are our communities looking at in terms of the placement of towers? How, is capacity of one tower going to expand so much that one is going to be sufficient in a certain radius? I mean, what are we looking at for the next 25 years?
Well, as the amount, in my.
Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
This just feels.
It's a, it's a, it's a good question. And I, I think in my opinion, looking at where we, where the industry is going, looking at the amount of people that use data every day, that data, that is going to increase exponentially.
Because data, like videos, streaming.
Data is video streaming.
Speed of data.
Going, yeah, the speed of data and the amount of data. I mean, in the, in the foreground, in the, in the background, our backhaul that supports our wireless network, there has been new research where, where we're able to support maybe terabits per second, which is a, think of maybe a one gigabyte file, which might be like a two-hour movie, right, a one gigabyte file. Think of a terabit. So, a terabit is a thousand gigabits. So, that's a thousand movies streaming in one second. And where we are going as an, in the.
And where we are going as an industry, especially with 5G, um, and you have applications like remote surgery where that requires a lowly insane, that requires very precise data and a large amount of data to, to push through that pipeline and to get to the people who need it. So I mean, applications like this, twenty to thirty years, these placements of these poles, I think are gonna be crucial that we get close to the customer, but also have the opportunity, you know, to service, um, our, our, our residents in this community and give them the opportunity to, to really, um, you know, take advantage.
Yeah, I'm just wondering from a longer-term perspective if our uniform development code in other towns who have these ordinances about placement of, of towers is, is not sophisticated or needs to be reconsidered? I don't, I mean, I know every time I get a phone, it's, it can hold twice as much or, you know, it was six months earlier. And the surgical thing, I, yeah, so I'm just wondering, just for, just representing the community, what we should be considering here in the bigger picture? Um, that's, I'm sorry, that's a little off-target, but any, any other questions for Mr. Vail?
So your issue is basically one of the capacity that you, you guys would realize if you move from the one tower to the second, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right.
Could you repeat that, I missed that.
Mr. Clark, I'm sorry?
I was, I was trying to understand him saying that capacity decreases, or the ability for capacity decreases.
I'm asking you, uh, if you do not move from the existing tower to the new tower you propose?
Well, that would require going, um, going back to SBA's tower, you know, potentially getting the height increase. But also, at the same time, we do have to change our additional equipment on that tower. And who's to say that next time we wanna go back on that tower and improve our network bet, um, even more, we might not be able to because the, the structure is full.
But presently?
Presently?
Presently on that tower right now, today, it meets the requirements, uh, to remain located on the present tower.
To my understanding.
And perform the, the need, the desires that you have.
Um, not necessarily, and I can't go into that because that is proprietary information to Verizon.
We keep getting into proprietary information and we can't ask any questions or make any decisions.
Well, any other questions? All right, there. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey?
Can you address the stealth issue?
The stealth issue?
Yes.
Um, I'm an RF engineer, so I'm-
Okay.
Um, the only thing I would see with the stealth issue is that, um, depending on the material that Hemp Hill does decide to go with, um, if we don't use the proper material, um, there is also always an associated signal loss with that material because you're putting something in front of the, our antennas. So when you put something in front of our antenna, antennas, the signal strength would, would get weaker. So that's one of the drawbacks of doing a stealth solution.
Anyone else? Oh, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vail.
You're welcome.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Good, I should say, good evening?
This has been a bit of a long one. Hi, um, good evening, I'm Chip Lyons, two oh one St. Charles, New Orleans, Louisiana, um, outside counsel for Verizon. I'm here to speak in support of Hemp Hill's application. I, I guess what I'd like to do is address some of the issues that have already come up and provide, so I'm, I'll, I'll give you the caveats, right? I'm not a network engineer, I'm not a structural engineer, but I, uh, go to a lot of these hearings and I, I try to kind of, um, put things not in legalese but in, into practical terms. So, I think the issue is that everyone's got a cell phone, there are more devices than people in the United States. As alluded to earlier, there's been this exponential growth in data consumption. Your cell phone initially started as a, you made phone calls with it, then texts. Now, it is a home theater system, it's a nine-one-one device, it's a homeschooling device, you use, you shop it, you shop with it, you use it for everything. So, what the carriers are facing is an exponential growth in demand. So it's gone from not so much can you hear me now type approach, but what is the speed of what you're downloading? And so, in this particular instance, what the, what the carriers are trying to meet is not coverage so much as capacity. So, capacity is, you know, if you have a, you know, a, a subdivision that has ten houses in it, you have a certain, a need for certain flood infrastructure. If you go to a hundred houses, that infrastructure need changes. And so what the, what the carriers are trying to do is build up that infrastructure capacity to meet the data and cov- the data and capacity requirements of, um, of their customers, of nine-one-one users, of first responders. So in this instance, based on the RF analysis, this site is needed in order to meet those additional cap- capacity requirements. And part of the issue is not just, so height makes a big difference, it's a rate, the, the, your cell phone's an incredible mini-computer. The signal coming from these towers is a radio signal, so it gets blocked by things. That's why if you're standing outside, you get better coverage than if you walk inside a building. So, the higher the height, the further the, the signal propagates, that provides better coverage and it also gets indoor more. With regard to, so height-
One minute.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, height matters with regard to the tower, location matters, height matters to get the signal further out, location matters, as was alluded to earlier, how far are you away from other towers? You can't be too close, you can't be too far away. Just real quickly on the stealth issue, the carriers try and, you know, a monopole, first of all, is a stealth design. Once it's there, people are, you're, you're gonna drive by it, you don't really see it as much. We think that this location, which was alluded to earlier, e- even though it's not a traditional stealth design, this location by being tucked behind Goodwill, away from public thoroughfares, kind of reduces any visual impact of, of this particular, particular tower. And as was stated earlier, if you go with a stealth design, that reduces the opportunity for others to co-locate on the tower. So, and finally, I know my time's running out, one of the issues here is, so SBA opposes this, that's obvious. They want Verizon to stay on their, on their tower. So in addition to the RF issues, a big issue is that because of Verizon's relationship with Hemp Hill and with the tower builder, if they wanna put additional equipment on this new tower, they can just go put it on, it's not a long, drawn-out process. They can get their new technology to market quicker, they can strengthen and improve their network quicker. Whereas on the SBA location, in addition to the structural issues, there are business issues that prevent Verizon from efficiently and rapidly deploying new equipment onto that tower. So, for those reasons, we're asking for your support for this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Any questions? Mr. Lyons? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Last, last but not least?
I hope I'm least, this is Tom, I'm Tom Arseneau, three thirty-three Texas Street, Suite seven hundred, Shreveport seven eleven oh one, uh, represent Hemp Hill. Of course, you've got the, you, you got the letters, you've got the submissions, you have the, you have the basic information there, so I'm not gonna go over that. I do wanna point out that this is the second time that we have been here. There are no members of the public that are in opposition to this application. And that's very significant because in lots of neighborhoods, these applications would draw tremendous opposition. And the reason-
We haven't found for any opposition yet, so we may see.
Well, I, I know all the people, I know all the people left in the room, Madam Chairman, I'm pretty sure there's no member of the public that's gonna speak in opposition other than the representatives of SBA. And, uh, and I think that is significant. And I also think that it's telling that the response to the information that Hemp Hill provided about the need for additional structure prompted, oh, we could add more structure by building this tire, tower twenty feet higher. Which seems to me to be an admission that there is a need for the additional tower. We respectfully request that you approve it. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Arseneau? All right, thank you very much.
I was least, Madam Chairman.
Yes, thank you for that. Anyone else here to speak in favor? This application? All right, anyone here to speak in opposition?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Can we bring up the PowerPoint, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bev Francis, one twelve East Pecan, San Antonio. I'm co-counsel with Alvin Meester, representing SBA. First, I'd like to address a couple of the questions raised regarding non-conforming. Commissioner, you asked, if it, if this tower is built and there are new ordinances put in place and it's non-conforming, would that prevent the expansion? The answer is no. The federal government and the FTC passed what's called sixty-four oh nine, which allows and requires administratively extensions of the towers, even if they're non-conforming. It's to, for the purpose of facilitating deployments like this. Plus, you're two steps away from making sure that these ordinances are even passed. So let's really look before us what the question is. In whose best interest is the Hemp Hill Tower? Is it in the best interest of Hemp Hill Verizon Wireless? Or is it in the best interest of the Shreveport community? Let's look at about three major points and we'll highlight some of the technical information. Hemp Hill's proposed one hundred and eighty-foot tower is not compatible with the adjacent properties. Point two, Hemp Hill has continued to fail, and as I'll show you, as late as yesterday, they continue to fail because they're unable to comply with the ordinance. And three, the Hemp Hill Verizon Business Plan, which has been alluded to, will not benefit your community. Number one, the proposed Hemp Hill one hundred and eighty-foot tower, that's an eighteen-story structure. As an architect, you know the, how we equate, uh, height based on number of floors. And under your code says it has to be compatible with general land use of adjacent properties. Let's look again, this tower they're proposing is only point two-two miles, less than a quarter mile away from the existing SBA tower. Now, your Shreveport zoning ordinance, as you're familiar with and you deal with on a regular basis, specifically says that you have to balance certain things. Number one, design location plans must be addressed, public safety, health and welfare, we'll address that momentarily. The proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties. And the location and size of structures, distances between the buildings and distances from structures to property lines. Your staff recommends denial. And the reason they recommend denial is they, it's their opinion that the interrelationship between the location and elevations of the proposed monopole and related equipment are not mutually compatible. And that the proposed one hundred and eighty-foot monopole would be out of scale with the adjacent buildings. Additionally, they're proposing that this tower be only thirty-seven point five feet, thirty-seven point five feet, twelve and a half yard sticks away from the Goodwill building. Also, they have mentioned, uh, in their reply to you all, oh, we're gonna address these development restrictions. As we talked about last time, there are development restrictions on this property, like every major development, maximizing the height at forty-two feet. Harmonious development, like staff recognized. This is a hundred and eighty-foot structure. Now let's look at the impact. These are pictures which we showed, uh, you last time, it really highlights, that's the location of the existing SBA tower. We can't even get the camera lens to take a hundred and eighty-foot picture. Look at its location again to the existing SBA tower. Look at this shot. Look how close it is gonna be to the proposed, uh, Hemp Hill Tower will be to Goodwill, and this is thirty-seven and a half feet away. Now, you wanna see what a hundred and eighty-foot monopole looks like? That's a hundred and eighty-foot monopole, actually a hundred and eighty-one foot monopole here in your parish. That's what they're proposing is in scale with this development. Number two, Hemp Hill has continued, uh, to fail and is unable to comply with the city ordinances. Your special use permit sections, as you know, says there has to be a need, as pointed about by the commissioner, for the particular use. Additionally, your staff points out that the UDC requires that applicants demonstrate a reasonable attempt to minimize standalone facilities and to co- locate, uh, co-locate on existing facilities as possible. There's been a lot of talk this morning, or this afternoon, this evening actually, about the structural analysis. It's not a requirement of SBA to prove its structural analysis of its own tower. It is a requirement under your code for Hemp Hill to show that the SBA tower is insufficient to handle the, uh, the need. And, you know, the theme going on through this is, it almost implies that they're not already on this tower. They are, reason they can't co-locate is because they're on this tower. As late as this morning, we received, uh, a copy of an email stating from your consultant that, I agree structural modifications and tower extensions are common industry practices and are routinely performed in the tower industry. Now, very importantly, there's been a lot of talk, in your package, there's a letter from Kelly Kitchens. Critically, it's, it points out things that directly oppose what Luke Condor just said. Number one is, the last, Verizon has been on this tower since twenty-ten. The last modification they've asked for, twenty-fifteen. For four years, they've been silent. Kelly has reached out to Luke Condor to say, what is it you need? Verizon is on over six thousand SBA towers. They have monthly, not only weekly, calls to discuss all the towers except this tower. The reason is, it's a business plan, move it as close as physically possible to relocate. This morning, we followed up with Kelly. Kelly, in her letter, says that last week she reached out to Luke saying, talk to us, for the first time, talk to us. Do you need to be at one eighty? Talk to us and we will discuss and we'll talk about cost. We're not saying they have to pay all of it, we're not saying they have to pay any of it. They won't talk because they don't like the business plan. The business plan is the, um, the plan that we talked about. Build towers as close as physically possible. I wanted to point out to you a couple of quick things and the impact. Number one is your consultant said, business considerations should not be considered for the justification of a new facility. Merely building a tower as close as physically possible, in this case, a quarter mile, solely for the purpose of relocating antennas is not business justification. You wanna see some actual Hemp Hill impacts? This is an application they filed at Red Oak, Texas. The city council in Red Oak, Texas denied the conditional use permit. I participated in the hearing because they wanted to build a tower one point one-five miles, a little over a tenth of a mile away from an existing SBA tower, one hundred feet away from the rear property lines of the residences. That is what, we'll just skip over, that is where the location would have been. Again, no consideration, whose best interest? Deer Park, I showed you at the last meeting, under this plan, AT&T came in and proposed to build a tower two hundred feet away from an existing SBA tower. The Deer Park City Council denied the application. Nationwide impact, I hope you'll take a minute and look at the article we've handed out. This is an article out of Michigan where a couple, and it's real-life impacted, the shadow tower program. They come back on Saturday, a tower's being constructed across the street. They say, and I'd like for you to read, so you're not hearing it just from me, the impact of this program that Verizon and Hemp Hill is trying to impose on your community, the impact it has on their community. And that is a pure business play, not an improvement of coverage, not improvement of capacity. Revised RF plots, please remember, at the last meeting, there was a question by one of the commissioners, why do you need an extra thirty days? Oh, we've gotta respond to this recent request and report. Last week was when, uh, Verizon delivered their updated maps. Three weeks later, three weeks, why? The reason are twofold, number one is, they cannot justify the change, the move. They cannot justify that this is anything other than a business play. Number two is, did they not want us to know? And finally, the question, again, an email yesterday from your consultant on the RF plots. The materials they delivered, the second document for the technical RF justification, did not include any data sheet or any supporting data that would allow CMS, your consultant, to determine the validity of the maps. We have provided detailed immediate responses- We have provided detailed, immediate responses, if I may just one second, detailed responses to the RF maps. We provided you a licensed RF engineer. I don't believe the Verizon Wireless representative, PE, is licensed in Louisiana, point raised by the consultant. We have shown that there is negligible, if any, difference in the coverage and capacity at the heights of 180 or 150. And the bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, is, in whose best interest is this? Is it the best interest of Hemp Hill and Verizon? Or is it in the best interest of the citizens in Shreveport? Again, what they are proposing is a needless 180-foot tower. We respectfully request that you accept staff's recommendation for denial and the questions that your consultant has raised about the viability of this application. Now, look forward to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
Any questions? Um, any questions from staff?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to point out, you made the comment that the additional tower's not going to improve capacity, or, and that's just, you know, we have one side saying that it will, we have one side saying that it won't. So, how do you, how should we?
How do you justify that?
Clearly, we don't know. Like, we don't know.
I think if you look at the report by your consultant, your consultant repeatedly has said, I believe now three times, that there's negligible, if any, improvement. And in fact, they are pleading, "Provide us more information." If we think logically, let's put away the PE degrees and everything. We're saying, for four years, you've never come to us, you are totally satisfied with the coverage and capacity at 159 feet. 2017, the AT&amp;T plan and Verizon plan come into play, Hemp Hill gets hired, they want to build a tower as close as possible for business reason, and now they say 180. They never contact us. Now, we're saying, fine, we're hearing that you want to be at 180, talk to us. And we have provided maps showing that there is sealed engineering maps, negligible, if any, difference in the coverage at 180, 180, or even 159, 180. So, I think that there's a lot of, I don't want to say bait and switch, but there is a lot of confusion being thrown out there as to capacity. You hear a lot, "Oh, this new Hemp Hill Tower will allow 5G." All 5G are the antennas. Once, they could come on right now, in fact, Sprint and many other companies are retrofitting, it's an antenna and radio system. It doesn't require a new tower. We're saying, if Luke Condor would have come to us, or still come to us, as late as 10 o'clock this morning, no return call, why aren't you talking to SBA? If you want 180 and you think that improves it, we have a report that says we can extend the tower under federal law, and it can be hardened, and it can accommodate the equipment that you need. But dead silence from Verizon because of this business plan.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Alvin Meester, 909 Poitras, 27th floor, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70124. What we have here is an 18-year story. It's 18 years since the SBA tower was built. It's also a story of modifications, innovations, and improvements. Over those 18 years, SBA has made changes to the tower to accommodate the current tenants over the years to keep up with 1G, 2G, 3G, 4G. Now, they're talking 5G. It's an 18-year story of those modifications. But most importantly, it's an 18-year story of cooperation. Every time we've had to modify that tower, all the tenants have gotten together with SBA, cooperated, talked. We've assessed each other's needs. And through today, we've met their needs. And I would contend that there is no need for this tower. And that's a very important concept, no need for the tower. We've been talking about a lot of zoning regulations, but what I'll boil all of this down to is that when an applicant wants to put up a new tower, they need to show a need. You've heard that over and over, need. It's not SBA that needs to prove the need or the lack of need. The applicant has the burden of proof to show the need. And more importantly, the need cannot be based solely on business reasons. The consultant was very clear, business reasons are not appropriate to show a need. What do you have in front of you? We had a prior meeting last month, we're back again. A lot of things have been submitted, submitted to the staff, submitted to CMS. Last month, the staff was recommending denial. Even though more information has been submitted, the recommendation is still denial. The CMS, your consultant, backs up that. Why? No need, no benefit, no proof of the ability to co-locate. On the other side, you've got SBA. We've given evidence that they have no need, that there is no benefit to the community, and that we can co-locate. We don't have to, the burden is on them. So, we would ask that you, importantly, accept the report of your MPC staff and vote to deny this special use permit application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And it's Mr. Meester?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Meester. Any questions by anyone? Anyone? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, is there any particular designate for a rebuttal, if desired?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, Ralph Weingarten from Falken Foster for Hemp Hill. Mr. Bev was right about one thing, that there's a lot of confusion being thrown out there, and I'll do my best to tackle that in the next five minutes.
Three, sorry.
One, one big concern I have is evidently there's some loops of communication that I'm out of, because he just said this morning, he became aware of your consultant saying that tower extensions are common in the industry, or making some pronouncement in response to the SBA letter. I've never seen that. I looked at my email, I don't have any emails about that. So, our opponent, SBA, is getting information from your consultant, and we are not, the applicant. Another thing, he said, there was an email yesterday from the consultant about a data sheet. We have not received a copy of that. If the consultant is specifying things specifically that they need, where's the email from staff saying, "Here's what the consultant needs"? We're out of that loop. So evidently, SBA and staff is in a loop of communication that we are not party to, and we would like to know what the consultant specifically is requiring, if there's been an email asking for a specific data sheet or requirement. We have not been asked for that. Consultant made a clear communication, should come through staff. Staff has never asked us about a data information sheet. So that's one point of concern. They mentioned their own RF engineer being a licensed engineer. There is no license for RF engineering. Your ordinance does require a structural engineer, licensed structural engineer, to opine about a fall radius, so when you get into the issue of a tower falling, there's a specific requirement for a Louisiana licensed professional engineer. And we presented a letter with a licensed engineer to address that fact. Your ordinance does not require a Louisiana, despite what your consultant may say, the ordinance does not require a Louisiana licensed engineer to opine on RF or coverage or need issues. That's because there is no license for RF engineering. What you wind up with is an engineer in some discipline, like Wilbur with electrical engineering, who has trained in that field and has a lot of knowledge, but there's no official license designation for RF engineering. The information, the maps, the plots that their engineer generated were not reviewed by your consultant. I haven't seen any input on their maps either. Another concern, they mentioned a lot about communications with Verizon, and we're in the rebuttal stage now, so I can't really speak for Verizon, but I was advised that Luke has spoken to them directly about this tower site. One of the problems with their program is that their plan is to protect their business interest and monopoly, and they're running it like an apartment building, where you not only lease the unit, but you've got to pay each time you move a piece of furniture. And so, there are business plan issues with how SBA deals with Verizon that are not present with the way Hemp Hill deals with Verizon. And those are conversations that I can't speak to with personal knowledge, but I'm told that those conversations happen between Verizon and SBA. And given the track record they talked about with many different sites and many different communities, there's obviously something wrong here if Verizon was happy, accommodated.
Sorry.
Okay.
Just okay to wrap up?
Yep. So, they mentioned other communities. We had a recent case just across the river in Bossier City, and I know you guys do things differently often, but Bossier MPC and City-
No.
Yeah. Bossier MPC and City Council just faced an identical situation and unanimously decided that additional wireless infrastructure there was in the community interest, and rejected SBA's effort to block a new tower construction. Similar situation on Barksdale Boulevard. In that case, there's an existing SBA tower on Barksdale Boulevard, and Hemp Hill proposed another one just 925 feet away. And same argument, same case. And in that case, Bossier City found it was in the community interest to have the additional infrastructure. Another situation-
I don't want to cut you off, I just want to be fair to the time, commit time restraints on the other parties as well, so.
Okay, so I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't want to get so much into the business disputes. My concern is a singular one. Address the capacity issue.
Okay. The capacity issue is different than the coverage issue. We had a couple of coverage maps showing signal-
That's why I asked that question.
Yep. The capacity issue, we've submitted best server maps, which show a service area from each tower. And so, on those maps, there are like pie-shaped colors radiating out, which represent each sector of the tower. And I could probably put one on the overhead there.
But for example, the gentleman, the young engineer, came up and he talked about the rapidity with which this technology is advancing. I think everybody in the room will agree to that.
Yeah.
There was a discussion from, I forget your last name, Mr. Bev-
Francis.
Francis, all right. That there had been no adverse relations between the two of you, between them and Verizon for over a four-year period of time. I think we all agree that four years in this technology is like an eternity. So, specifically, how will you guys be hampered, or how will Verizon be hampered with respect to a decision by this body not to allow the additional tower in terms of the capacity standpoint?
Right, with respect to capacity.
Yes, sir.
This is from the SBA location, and if you see, this pink is extending outward from the top of it, from this SBA location. It penetrates almost all the way to this other Verizon site, so there's a definite overlap there.
About how far is that?
That is probably about a mile, or just over a mile.
Okay, so.
And so, callers being serviced by this tower, which is represented by the kind of this grayish blue with a layer color and a green color, if you're on a call in this area, you would be switched back and forth between this location and this location because of that overlap. There's not a dominant signal strength area. In this case, if you look at the proposed Hemp Hill Tower location, there's a much clearer line of demarcation between the sites. If you're here, or here, or here, or here, or here, you're on the Hemp Hill Tower. If you're here, or here, or here, you're on this tower. There's a clear line between them, which provides a clear handoff. As you move from one tower location to another, your signal strength gets weaker at the site you're passing and stronger at the site you're approaching. And so, it'll switch you. If you're in a hilly road, sometimes you'll go up a hill and get switched back, and down the next hill, and get switched forward, and up the next hill, and get switched back, because as you change, the one tower will be stronger than the other, and so its technology switches you. And when that happens, there's a much greater chance of being dropped or having interruption to your service. So, if you get a real patchy area where, like I mentioned before, there's that patchwork of service from different locations, RF engineers don't like to see that. They like to see strong, clear lines between the different cells that are formed, so that there's just kind of one clean handoff. So in this case, that's one of the issues. Another issue is the balancing of traffic. How much traffic is going to be on this site as opposed to that site? And you usually want to position your towers so that the balance is pretty equally distributed. You want to relieve enough capacity off the adjacent tower to leave room to grow, but you don't want to completely fill up, or you want to kind of balance it in between so that your proposed site has some room for growth, and the site being relieved of overburden has some site for growth. And what they're saying is, this position relative to their other sites better balances that capacity offload than SBA location. And that, of course, changes as your customer base grows, as your usage grows, it grows in certain areas, so that's an ever-changing, moving target that RF engineer has to deal with, is where is the increase in demand coming from, and how do we best balance that using our existing towers, and where do we need to fill in?
I know.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Colvin?
You made mention, you had one in Bossier, doing this one. He made mention there's 6,000 of these agreements. You got job security if you're going to go to every one of these meetings.
You would know. We don't want to promote. No.
For sure. I'm done, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your rebuttal. Um, board?
Motion approved.
Is that Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Motion to approve.
Second?
That was the applicant.
Oh, yeah, what are you moving to?
He's moving to approve the application.
Approve the application.
All right. Do you have seconds?
The applicant moved to now.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Joseph. Discussion. I would just like to hear some of y'all's feedback.
Well, I'm not a-
Just looking at the, my concern is that, A, I don't understand all of this-
Right.
Nearly enough to make a call for the future of Shreveport on technology capacity and increased. But my concern, as I mentioned earlier, is just that I feel like, and y'all weigh in, the reason it appears that this was denied is because of a communication and timing issue and an information provision problem, where it was not made clear, or at least in the perception of the applicant, what exactly they needed to provide. And it looks like a lot of stuff was provided, because this is an awfully thick stack, but the consultant, who we have not heard from, evidently was not able to offer a substantive recommendation because of lack of information, or am I reading that wrong? Or was he just, he or she just saying, "No, the information I got was sufficient, and it doesn't meet the need." They don't, there's no proof. Is the recommendation based on the need for more information truly, or is it just, is it substantive?
Who's that question for?
All of you, to weigh in. Well-staffed, anyone just weigh in at this table?
We got the impression, and I may be wrong, that the consultant was saying that the information provided did not change their opinion, that co-location could not be adequately handled, and therefore, denying- handled, and therefore denying the additional tower.
Because I'm reading, you know, the existing SBA tower is currently at full capacity and cannot accommodate any future providers, however, MPC staff does not have substantive documentation that verifies this statement and therefore stands firm.
In the last paragraph?
Yeah. I mean, that's just troubling to me, because it just looks more like a deadline.
Yeah.
I think that was prior to the last communication we had from the consultant, I may be wrong.
Okay, who was the consultant?
CMS.
Is-
CMS. And she might as well go out with a bang, Mona Sweeney was the person that they were communicating with.
Right.
She might tell you if that was the last letter or if that was a subsequent letter after that.
And were they directly communicating with either the applicant or SBA?
Sounds like SBA.
Yeah, sounds like not to have that.
We had an open records request.
Yeah.
The accusation that we were dealing with them, we had an open records request.
Okay, certainly not an accusation, just trying to figure out the role of the consultant-
No, 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 fine.
Not yours, but their act.
Oh, oh, gotcha, okay.
Madam Chairman, like we said, we're not technical experts on the board on coverage areas or radio frequency and all that, but-
We have to go toward the zoning.
Yeah, but again, we're still working on wireless zoning additions to the UDC, we hadn't even ironed that out yet. So, this is something, a new ground that we're walking on. So, until somebody can say for definite, we don't need this extra coverage, just like you said on wireless usage and streaming and 5G and everything else, we better err on what we need, not what, you know. It sounds like a little bit of the payment issue and pricing and all that gets involved in this, in relationships, but we just need to go on the need for Cattle Parish and City of Shreveport.
I would hate for aesthetics to interfere with our technological growth.
That's the way the ordinance is written.
Right, so I don't know.
I think it's a little close to the Goodwill Building, I don't like it being that close. You usually see one of these towers out in the country, there's nothing around it for 200 yards, but, you know, I don't like it being that close to Goodwill, but it sounds like they don't have a position other than that one to put it up.
Goodwill doesn't care.
Goodwill won't.
But they want the rip in the middle.
Right. Motion on the floor, and a second, can we call for the vote?
This is our discussion ever.
I know, that's why I'm calling for the vote.
I have one other question. If Verizon moves off the tower that they're currently on, will anyone fill up the other tower, will it sit there vacant?
The new tower?
The old tower.
I think they have other people on it.
Three others on it.
Three others.
I mean, they're having to expand to accommodate.
So, it's not going to be vacant or anything like that?
No, it won't be-
So, there's a use for it?
Correct.
That would just be two towers with three located on one and one located on the other.
For now, right? I mean, I think my concern about this whole deal is where it's going. I mean, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, I left here in 2000, correction, in 98 and moved to New Orleans, I came back in '01, everybody had a cell phone. Everybody, and their grandmother even, you know what I mean? And so, I don't see this slowing down at all. And I think that we would be wise to be on the front end of it. I understand the aesthetic issue, but where they're talking about locating this one next to the Goodwill and some restaurants and a movie theater, I think it would preponderate in my opinion, in my votes' opinion, in favor of the added capacity, because everybody's on it. I mean, we tell them to turn them off and they come in here, and we're on it. You know what I mean? It's just, it's a facade to say that it's not going to, it's going to increase and it's going to increase exponentially, in my opinion.
We get better perception of the Nancy, by the way.
Now, I qualify that by saying I slept at a Best Western.
Holiday Inn last night. There you go. There you go.
I think it's just a reality situation, so, and I don't want to, and again, I want to also get on the record that I'm not trying to get wrapped up in what appears to be a business squabble between these two entities.
No. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, there's a motion to approve in a second, a call for the vote.
It aired out on me a long time ago, that's why I have to be on both of you.
See? You waited too long.
Too long.
You waited too long and then computers shut down.
That's our coverage, we got bad coverage.
Can we not do it now? Okay, well, vote my hand, motion to approve. One, two, three. That unanimous? And that application is approved. And this is a recommendation only that will go to the City Council, correct?
Yes.
For final approval?
The only way it will happen is if they appeal it to the City.
Is this not a City Council?
Yeah, there's a final decision.
It's final decision.
This is final?
Yeah. They can appeal this to the City Council.
For the special use?
Yeah.
But they can appeal it to the City Council, okay, thank you, sorry, special uses are, okay. All right, thank you all very much for your time this late hour.
We've got to do more. We've got to do more wireless. We've got more wireless right here coming.
Yeah, that's what, I knew that, yeah. I knew that, so, okay. We talked about that, we talked about that on the way here. All right, the last case, number 19341C and 19304P, these are UDC amendments, ironically talking about wireless telecommunications. So, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a continuation, I'll go over the brief timeline. This was introduced for your customary 30-day introduction, we presented it to you in July. The industry asked for a 30-day deferral, within that deferral on July 15th, we had a conference call with the industry, we sent out those comments and feedback for the August MPC meeting, right before at the 11th hour, we received some comments back from some tower providers and vendors, so we made some quick adjustments. The industry again asked for a deferral, so I set some hard deadlines of August 23rd, the industry met those, we went over those, sent back whatever comments they were, and as of yesterday, I received two minor tweaks which are in front of you. Mr. Lyons did have two small comments, I addressed those, I think he might, you know, comment on it in the entire process, but the idea behind that is to hopefully these Kotex amendments will alleviate some of the misinformation that's down there, that it brings it up to speed on exactly where we need to be. There were some huge holes in the current use standards, and our idea is that these address those holes to make it a more streamlined process of exactly what the applicant needs moving forward when it comes to wireless telecommunication, specifically macro towers, which is evidence from the last case that we saw. So, that's a real quick presentation on it, I know Mr. Lyons is here, he might want to address some of that, and I would allow for you to let him do so at the start.
What's your problem?
Welcome.
Good evening again. Chip Lyons, 201 St. Charles, New Orleans, Louisiana, here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I just want to thank Mr. Bailey, thank the staff for all their hard work on this, they have worked, they've been very responsive, they listened to comments from Verizon, other industry members, and we're in support of the revised ordinance, and we hope that by revising the ordinance, it'll make it, it'll be in the best interest of the community and also provide, you know, further, better deployment of technology on a going-forward basis. So, again, thank you to the staff for all their hard work, and thank you to members of the commission for your attention to this matter, and we hope that you'll forward it to the council.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may?
Yes, sir, please.
And I'm sure that this was included in the ordinance. I think today showed the need that we're going to have to engage consultants in making decisions when it comes to these micro towers.
Yes.
And I'm hopeful that, and I think we've had the discussion, that that is included in the ordinance, that the consultant's fee would be included in the application, because it's getting to the point where, you made a decision today, I got the feeling that you made a decision based on the expanding technology and availability of the technology and not totally based on whether or not you truly believe either side of the argument, because the lack of technical knowledge prevented us from going into details in that matter. So, I'm trying to make sure that that's included in the, in the orders that you're setting forth, if not, it may, it may need some additional evaluation.
So, the, we do not set fees, the MPC does not set fees, City Council will always adopt the schedule of fees. How it's provided in the ordinance is that it says that we have the right to hire a third-party consultant, and that that third-party consultant will, is responsible for paying those fees.
And that's what I wanted to make sure, and I think you would want that included in the amendment.
So, the next step from this, obviously with the Kotex amendments, is we will propose the fees that City Council needs to adopt with that. I have spoken with the industry, we haven't, they haven't suggested any, we haven't suggested any, I'm not saying that that's going to be, it might be contentious, I have no idea, because there's a lot of different avenues, different municipalities do it different ways, some of them just make a high application fee, some of them, you know, put up a deposit and like into an escrow account, and then the third-party consultant draws off of that escrow account. So, there's, there's a lot of options out there. I know I will be getting back with Chip and other industry officials on what we feel that we want to recommend to City Council what that fee will be, not only, you know, it's in best interest of the carriers, but also it's in best interest for Shreveport.
And like I said, we have to be concerned what's best for the city of Shreveport. We want the best technology, but we also want to do requirements and make requirements that are best for the citizens of the city of Shreveport and Cattle Parish, and this is what we're trying to massage our way through. I'm not asking you not to vote to approve this, I'm just stating it frankly for the record, that for future reference, we don't need to go through this, we need to have answers that are available to you that are viable answers that you can use to make your decision, and we didn't quite get there today.
These types of applications to the MPC are different, new and complex, and I felt like the consultant didn't have a systematic way of responding and asking for information. So, maybe we can work on fine-tuning the process and exactly what the consultant needs, exactly the timeframe, because I felt like there was just a lot of communication problems on this application.
Once these, should these Kotex amendments go into place, we're redefining the application, we'll also redefine the checklist, and so that checklist will clearly define exactly, hey, you need to provide A, B, C, and D, otherwise, you know, that application will be deemed incomplete. And there's processes, you know, federal mandated processes that talk about all that, that the consultant knows about and we're learning about, but, you know, as part of this process that we've learned through the previous case, that a more defined checklist is needed, but our current code doesn't provide the information within the use standards that would allow for that. These Kotex amendments open up that avenue that we would be able to address those, that criteria within those checklists.
Okay, that's great.
And like I said, also, just an ending, I won't say anything else, I said I wasn't going to say anything in the meeting at all.
You can say as much as you want.
No. We are also looking at, you know, this is a process that's being conducted by the city of Shreveport, and the city of Shreveport has multiple experts, multiple departments. We're taking on a mammoth task that I don't know if we should be taking this whole task on by ourselves, and I'm looking at, Stephen and I were having discussions earlier, I'm looking at reaching out to the city and other departments and finding out what participation they can make, because, you know, there are some fees involved, there are some expenses that's going to be involved that the city of Shreveport should be involved in. I hate that the city councilman left because I was hoping that she would hear this and see the difficulties of dealing with these applications, but we will be reaching out to the city to try to come up with even a better way of removing all of this technical requirements and technical decisions away from you as a board, and we will just deal with where they're located.
That sounds like a good plan.
All right.
Um, wait a second, so, do we need to make some kind of a, um, do we need to do anything?
Did you ask for opposition?
I'm sorry?
Did you ask for opposition? Not that there's anyone out there that-
You haven't really asked for anybody to speak.
Any opposition.
Yeah, or anyone else in favor? Anyone in opposition to these amendments?
Motion to approve to go to the council.
As amended, those are amendments, so.
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Joseph, motion by Ms. DeMardeux.
You don't have to do the hand, six years now.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Everyone, that are approved as amended. Thank you for your work, Mr. Bailey.
Motion adjourned.
All business committee chair reports, there's some master plan issues, I want to get that set, new business research, other matters, director's report?
Real briefly.
Yes, sir.
Extremely briefly. You noticed, you may have noticed in your packets this hearing that you had live pictures of, the pictures of the different sites, I just wanted to share with you that was provided as, by the zoning enforcement section and Mr. Reginald Jordan, who says very little throughout these hearings, ensured that you had adequate pictures to see exactly what was on there.
We were enjoying, yes, we were enjoying all of them on our screen, so thank you.
Secondly, master plan meeting is scheduled for Friday, September 6th, we hope that MPC board members at the very minimum will attend, so we'll have a courtroom, but-
Mr. Roca is on that committee? And Mr. Andrews?
Ms. Bersi and Mr. Roca.
And it's at noon?
It's at noon, this Friday. They have invited you with a stale sandwich. But, please, please, be in attendance, we have some things to discuss as we try to move forward.
Can someone contact Mr. Roca to remind him, just in case?
We will reach out to him.
Thank you, yeah, that'd be great.
And find out why.
Okay, perfect.
I think he had said that it was a dire necessity today, and we need a courtroom, he could try to get here.
Okay.
And the very last thing, I shared with you earlier today, and I'll share it one last time, this is Mona Sweeney's last MPC meeting, she has been a valuable employee, she has done great things, she's worked extremely hard, she's become quite a tenacious planner. I know wherever she goes, she would do extremely well, we are very proud that she participated and was a part of our staff, and we will miss her very much, and we bid her good bye with a smile.
Maybe you'll come back. Come back. I know, try to come back, she's looking at Australia, so we might not be in the running anymore.
I have a reason now to see a live kangaroo kick, so, and that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, anything else? I kind of ran through the end there, is anything else? Thanks again, Mr. Elerson.
Welcome along, welcome aboard.
Yeah, I don't know if he'll come back again.
Are they all like this?
It's not usually that bad.
It could have been a lot longer if someone else-
This is short.
All right, motion adjourned.
All right, man.
It's been two hours long, that was very key, I thought maybe one of you was figuring your side.
Okay, we got another one.